All right, we'll get started here today. Welcome to the Thursday, January 23rd, 2025 regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda provided. Mr. Leonard, will you please call the roll?
Yeah, hold one momento, please.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, let's try that. Commissioner Lee?
I am here.
Commissioner Weich?
Here.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt?
Here.
Commissioner Abrams?
Here.
Commissioner Dish?
Here.
Commissioner Mills? Commissioner Weatherby?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Norton?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We're going to move on to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Weich, seconded by Commissioner Weatherby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, all right, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the January 7th, 2025 meeting? Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Commissioner Weatherby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry. All right, motion carries. We're going to move on to reports to the Planning Commission and written communications. We are going to start with Councilmember Dish. Great.
Tuesday was a remarkable day because we contributed no business that I can remember, unless there was something on the consent agenda.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to manager report. Mr. Leonard?
Yeah, two items for you this evening. One, I've shared a memo with you at your place that I wanted to just summarize. At the January 7th meeting, there was during the conversation about the capital improvement plan, there was conversation about the Planning Commission offering a communication, an ancillary communication regarding the discussion of the capital improvements plan. I'm sure many of you recall. And there was some, a request for clarity about when that's appropriate. I think Commissioner Weich had brought up that sometimes that I have advised that I don't think it's appropriate yet at that time that I thought it was appropriate. So I thought it might be helpful just to provide some more clarity in this regard. One, I just want to start with the fundamental basis. You are an advisory group to the city council, and you can communicate with the city council whenever you desire. Full stop. It's your choice. You can decide when you want to do that. A couple of things that I would just add to that in your consideration. One, you speak as a whole. And so whenever you are going to communicate to the, to the city council, it should be as the whole body speaking. And the best way for that to happen is for you to have specific language in front of you that you can review, make sure that you are in agreement with, and take the vote to ensure that the majority of you as the commission do agree with that communication. So the best way to do that, if that is desired in the future, is we've laid out a couple, I've laid out a couple of potential methods here. One, either the executive committee, a subcommittee, or a new subcommittee could be designated to draft that communication, present it to the full planning commission, and then you could consider that. Two, you could, through just consensus, designate a single commissioner to work on that language and present it. I do want to advise for open meetings act requirements, that would be important that that communication then comes through staff so we can share it with the entirety of the planning commission. In both cases, I think ideally that would happen in a subsequent meeting so that we can be clear on the language, and you have time to review and consider it. And then finally, I just want to clarify staff's role in it. So you, you can communicate, and you don't have to ask our advice on it. If you do ask your advice, our advice on it, we're going to give it to you. We're going to give you our advice. I think that I bring a perspective of a lot of work in this realm, balancing a lot of factors. I've put in here just some of the ways that I would advise a communication, some of the things that I would consider, whether or not I'm sensing sort of a consensus of the commission on an issue, whether I think it is potentially undermining a decision or could be interpreted to undermine a decision, or at times just, just from a necessity perspective, whether or not my advice is whether I think it's, it's necessary or appropriate or not. But I just want to be clear, that is advice from me. You do not have to listen to that. If you ask, we're happy to provide it, but I want to be clear, ultimately, that's for you as the commission to decide. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear. There was definitely some, I think, confusion about that, and so I hope this helps with some clarity. If you feel, as you go forward, that there's still some questions, happy to provide whatever further support we can. Second, I want to introduce to you relatively new member of our team, Senior Planner Michelle Bennett. Michelle had joined our team in October and is primarily focused on the comprehensive plan. So when things go bad, that's me, and when things are going well, that is Michelle. I've asked Michelle just to give kind of a quick introduction of her background to the commission.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I've lived in Ann Arbor for about 10 years now. I moved here to go to the University of Michigan to get my master's degree in urban and regional planning. I worked for Professor Norton there for one semester, and since graduating, I have worked in planning, in the planning field, all around the state. In 2022, I came to the city. If any of you recognize me from a previous role, I was a community engagement specialist with the city, with systems planning. And in October, I started with the planning department to help with the comprehensive plan.
And it is very nice to have her. That's my report.
Great. Thank you very much. One of the things I'll say from Transportation Commission is that I did pass on some of our deliberations at the, regarding the CIP, regarding the East Medical Center Drive Bridge, as well as the Sunset Sidewalk discussion that we had. So with that, any other reports from commissioners? All right, we're going to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on a topic that's not listed as a public hearing, and we'll first hear from those present and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine. If you're on the phone, or use a raise hand feature on Zoom for phone access, please call 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last name or the last three digits of the phone number, or you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak, and please move to a quiet area, mute any background noise so we can hear you clearly. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Do we have anyone present that would like to address the commission? Okay, with that, do we have any remote participants?
We do have remote participants, but nobody has indicated a desire to address the commission at this time.
Got it. Going to give it. All right, with that, we're going to move on. All right, we're going to go to public hearings scheduled for the next business hearing. Mr. Leonard?
No new public hearings are scheduled for the February 4th regular business meeting.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to go on to Section 8A, which is unfinished business. This is the proposed amendment to nonconforming structures, Section 5.32.2 in the Unified Development Code. Staff recommendation is approval. We'll go through presentation from the planning manager. Mr. Leonard?
Thank you. Let me, give me one minute here to pull up the presentation.
It's good to see a full house, so thank you. Welcome. Relative full house. Yeah, yeah.
Compared to what you usually see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I feel tethered to the right, but I'll do my best. Thank you very much. You might notice that I am not zoning coordinator John Bennett, or John Barrett, excuse me, suddenly conflating my team members, John Barrett. John was dutifully manning the table at the zoning board of appeals earlier this week along with Commissioner Weatherby, so I told him that I would be happy to do my best to provide this in his stead. So you previously had a conversation on this. This is proposed changes to the nonconforming structure provision of our text amendment. In short, right now, any alteration to a nonconforming structure often require, typically requires approval by the zoning board of appeals. As shared with you previously, these are almost generally always approved, and the zoning board of appeals was cognizant of that, and in fact initiated that staff and the planning commission consider looking at these provisions in order to improve the efficiency of that process. Since the last time you saw this, we've had another petition go through that process this week, so we're now at 23 of 23, pretty good ratio. 22 of them were residential properties and one nonresidential property. And as you'll know from the previous discussion, we are proposing to change the residential properties that are subject to this provision now to be an automatic approval, so as long as the extent of the nonconformity is not expanded or other nonconformities are not created. When you saw, when you discussed this previously, I think that there was a couple of points of clarification, question. The big takeaways that, that we saw were concerned that we were going in the opposite direction of efficiency by adding standards where currently the language is pretty simple and direct. In the proposed language, we've tried to respond to that, but one of the reasons, one of the ways that I wanted to acknowledge that we responded to that is not by eliminating the standards, but by making it clear that there is a distinction between the language that remains for nonresidential uses and that it is still a discretionary approval by the zoning board of appeals. And what we are proposing in this proposed language is essentially a by right alteration. It doesn't, there's no discretion involved. If you meet those standards, your permit shall be issued. And so that language has been modified to not hopefully make that clear and to specifically remove any sort of impending or intend, implied discretion of the planning manager in order to make that judgment. In fact, it says if you meet those standards, you can continue with your alteration. This ideally is going to have benefits for both for the zoning board of appeals to focus on fewer applications. It's going to have benefits to our use of resources that we are going through that process for applications that are approved at an incredibly high rate, and it's going to have a very significant benefit on those property owners who are going to be able to move much more quickly with their proposed projects. So you've seen some of these examples, so I'm not going to, already, I'm not going to spend a lot of time just to reiterate. One example is converting nonhabitable space into habitable space. This is a common occurrence that happens where we have a nonconforming property that perhaps wants to re-renovate the basement to add additional bedrooms or an additional unit. Here's an example of that. Doesn't meet the dimensional setbacks. There's no expansion of the nonconformity of the lot area or setbacks. They desire to add bedrooms in the basement. Currently, this would require a consideration by the zoning board of appeals. Under the proposed change, this would be a residential property, would meet all of those tests, and the permit would be issued without further discretion or consideration. Another example is increasing the height or expanding the footprint of a structure that is nonconforming due to lot size, lot width, or setbacks. This is an example of that circumstance. This is an existing house that doesn't meet the dimension, the setback dimensions of the property. It has a two point, a two foot, seven inch setback that doesn't meet that standard. I want to be clear that we, under this proposed language, we are saying that you cannot expand a nonconformity. That requires some interpretation by staff. We evaluated a lot of different language, but in this case, this does not expand the nonconformity. The property has a two foot, seven inch setback, and it would remain to have a two foot, seven inch setback. I fully acknowledge more of this building is going to be along that setback, but the nonconforming dimension is not changing. We don't measure setback by the duration or breadth by which it touches that property line. We measure the minimum dimension between the structure and the property line. So we kept the proposed language very simple, does not expand the nonconformity. Here's another example of, that you've seen. This was a property that intended to add an addition. It doesn't meet the rear setback of the property. They wanted to build an addition into the side yard. Again, rather than requiring nonconformity, an alteration to a nonconforming application and decision by the zoning board of appeals, this would again be eligible by right through the permitting process and these provisions because it would meet all those tests of the proposed language. It's not creating a new nonconformity, it's not expanding a nonconformity, and the permit could be issued. All of this is going to provide a lot of new opportunity for more efficiency. It's going to provide easier opportunity to realize more intense uses on properties. Over the long term, arguably, it could have the effect of slowing the amortization of nonconforming uses out of our community, but I would argue from the track record of these being approved, that doesn't seem to be an important priority for us, and it's not something concern, of concern just from staff's perspective. So happy to address any questions now or after the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, what we'll do is we'll go to public hearing first, and then we will go to discussion. And please do remember that this is a amendment to the UDC, so this is just a recommendation to city council, must have two readings, I think, at city council. So, all right, with that, we're going to go on to public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals present and remote to speak for three minutes on this item. We'll first, to speak remotely, please press star nine if on the phone, and use a raise hand feature if you're on the Zoom. For phone access, please call 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom. You'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak, and please ensure that you're in a quiet area. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on this item at this time? All right, seeing none. Do we have any remote callers?
No hands raised, let's give it a minute. The masses remain silent.
Thank you. Always said, three Mississippi silently. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the proposed motion, which is that the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve amendments to Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, Section 5.32.2, nonconforming structure, to allow administrative approval for additions to nonconforming buildings in a residential zoning district as proposed. We have a move. Move by Commissioner Weatherby, seconded by Commissioner Abrams. Discussion. Who'd like to kick us off? Commissioner Adams?
First of all, thanks to staff for working on this. I think this is a lot better. Thanks also to Commissioner Norton for your work, trying to make it, mark it up. I'm still a little bit confused about what the sub clauses are doing. It feels like what we've done with that language here is define variance in the code, because that's every one of those items is a thing that would kick you into the variance world. So if I've said the planning manager can approve unless it meets one of these four things, that it would only meet if it's not the thing that we're thinking about it is, right? We've, we've more or less, it's going to be by operation of law, none of those things to be on this track. If you're expanding a nonconformity, if you're adding a new one, you're in variance land at that point. I just want to be cognizant of the fact that we're, we don't have a definition for variance. We've kind of created a little bit of one here. Maybe that's an opportunity later on. I'm not, it feels like surplus language to me, because again, we're only considering this as a, as a alteration to nonconforming if it is none of those things. So the standard by which a planning manager would not approve it if it was one of those things, it will never, it will never hit one of those triggers because it wouldn't be considered as a, as an alteration to a nonconforming, to be in this world. But I'm, it's still a lot better than where it was, so I'm, I'm inclined to vote yes on it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Thoughts related to this particular proposed amendment? Okay, seeing none. This one seems fairly straightforward. Again, no exacerbation or expansion of the, actually, the simplicity of expansion actually is, makes it pretty good. So I think with that, then we can just move to a rule call vote for the recommendation to city council. Mr. Leonard?
Yes, one moment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem.
I was missing a name. Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Weich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Abrams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dish?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills? Is not here. Commissioner Weatherby?
Yes, enthusiastically.
You might get some nights off now. Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to regular business. This is Section 9A. This is a comprehensive plan, presentation, and discussion. So we're going to start with staff presentation. Mr. Leonard, back to you.
It is, and you're going a lot faster than I expected. Thank you. Let me...
During COVID, I think we could play the Jeopardy theme song on piano, I remember. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, maybe a little recorder. Yeah. I think this will be a robust discussion, so just wanted to make sure we get...
Stay out soon enough.
Yeah, yeah.
This, my colleague, Michelle, and my consultant team has honestly let me go a little rogue here, so I'm grateful for that. But big picture is we're, we're hard at work at starting to draft this document, and a couple themes emerged late in the process, particularly at the last steering committee meeting and at the last comprehensive plan subcommittee meeting, that are distinct from how I've been thinking about the plan and aspects of the plan and some of our conversations with the public over the course of the last year. And so I wanted to highlight some of those. I'm going to go through the entirety of the presentation. We did schedule it as a public hearing, so there's opportunity for people to, both here and remote, to weigh in as well. And then my goal is not any motions, but I am going to be looking towards you as the planning commission for some feedback and some reflect, we're going to be reflecting back, back what we're hearing on some of those input points to make sure that at the end of the day, we're going to do the work to roll up our sleeves and work on the document that you're going to want to see at the end of this process. We're going to be having the same conversation with the city council as well at a working session in February, so it's lots of opportunities. However, in the context, I just want to remind, you are the drafter, and they are the thumbs upper, thumbs downer. So both are important, but this is your document, and so your, your feedback is going to be really important to us as we wrestle with some of these issues. So our comprehensive, our comp team, comp plan team also will be joining us over the course of the evening. Some of them will be joining us a little bit later, but they're going to be all available via Zoom as well. So just reiterating what I said, we're starting to draft the document, looking for direction from both the commission and the city council to make sure that we're going to arrive at an endpoint that feels to be your vision. Why don't you work? During community engagement, which we've been doing robustly, we've shared updates on all the methods we've engaged the public over the past year. The majority of people welcomed increased density, but what that means to people means a lot of different things. One of the ways frankly, we tried to scale that for people in those conversations is to start talking about a number of units in previously R1, R2 neighborhoods. Since that time, we'll get to it, there's been questions raised about whether that's right, whether that limit is appropriate, and so that's one of the things we want to get feedback. There's also going to be, as part of the background research on this, we talk a lot about diversification of the tax base. We are a company town, full stop. We will always be a company town, full stop. When we're talking about diversification of the tax base, it's probably a lot more modest than a community that doesn't have such a very significant institutional employer located here. But it doesn't mean that's something that we should forego. When, like anything else, when a tax base is solely focused in one category, it is at risk for swing, economic swings in that category. I calibrate that with us, our experience in a community where we're probably a lot more insulated from a job swing perspective than if our largest employer was a transmission plant, or it was a refinery, for that matter. But nonetheless, when we can have a diverse tax base that does provide us some stability and some resiliency when certain segments go through economic swings. Ideally, the city is a place that's a real city. It's ideally a place where a lot of different things happen, a lot of different commerce has transpired, a lot of people of different, me, of different educational backgrounds can thrive, work. Housing's part of that, jobs are a part of that. And recognizing that our window or our aperture to always have a lot of influence over these things is modest. We do have some influence through our land use policies, but there's a lot of other factors that go into this that are outside of our control. And so we have the potential to overregulate because, because that window is so narrow, if we are too constrained, we're kind of choking the only opportunity influence we have at the, at the same token. It's also a very modest opportunity for us to have influence and to put our thumb, our thumbprint on what we want our community to be. So we also have the potential to underregulate. There are no right or wrong answers, but these are the balances that we need to think about when we're not only setting a vision for the city, but how we're going to regulate it. So I'm going to start with low-rise residential. Low-rise residential is, what you're seeing here is largely all of the existing R1 and R2 zones and throughout the city of Ann Arbor. It accounts for 36%. It accounts for 36% of all land in the city and about half of all land that's not zoned public or township. This is part of our current future land use map that we have is part of 95% of the geography of zoned land in the city that allows residential development. And this is obviously a big geographic area. And this is the area that I think comes to my mind for a lot of opportunity for missing middle housing. We've already allowed accessory dwelling units. I think this is a great opportunity to set a vision to take that step further in our community. We are, are not unique from a lot of other communities across the country who have systematically shot ourselves in the foot from a regulatory perspective over history. A lot of communities have said you can put single family in these great swaths of your city and everything else has to go in a much smaller footprint. There's a lot of opportunity to not only provide more quantity of housing in the city, but more typology of housing in the city. And part of what we envision is that the, a low-rise residential area can achieve this in part. Big picture, we have about 53,000 housing units in the city. I want to call out that originally a version of the slide had a 68,000 number. That came from data that I just can't validate as accurate. It came from assessing data that I don't believe is accurate. It's not used for housing unit counts. This number is based on the number of certified rentals that the city's inspected over the past three years and owner occupied homes that are receiving the principal residence exemption. So that's a, I think that there's lots of opportunities to improve this number. We will continue to try to do that. Over the last three years, 680 new homes have come online. Those are, that's 680 new certificate of occupancies for homes of all types. And that relates to the state, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority has adopted a plan and it has put down, put out targets for our community. It breaks the state into regions and subregions. So we are doing pretty good as it relates to rental housing targets, but we're not doing very good as it relates to owner targets. It should be noted that the way they measure those is different. They're not measuring them as like detached or condos. They're measuring ownership opportunities and they're measuring rental opportunities. We have approved or under, either site plans that are approved and under construction or site plans that have made it through the process, but have not yet started construction, include 5,300 units currently. So when I say pipeline, I would say that we have 5,300 units in the pipeline. We have another couple, I think just under 2,000 that are currently under review. So to be clear, that 5,300 number is not a goal. It is just that, a measure of the quantity of all the apartments, condos, homes that have been approved by either this body, me, the city council, and are either under construction currently or awaiting construction. And then when we're talking about potential of new housing units, we are exploring, the way we're approaching this from the project team is we're looking at these land use categories and we're assuming some densification and some outcomes of those. And depending on what those are, that could net us housing potential of 30 to 97,000 units just from a geographic perspective. But when we're looking at those numbers, I just want to, I just want to frame them in a couple of aspects. One, that is a very simplistic, looking at geographies, applying a densification of X units per acre and doing math. There is a lot of infrastructure questions that we've talked about that relate to being able to support that many homes. When we're talking about increasing the annual production of housing to different, these different rates, there are people on this panel that know this much better than I do. But the notion that we are going to substantially increase the production of housing by two times or three times or five times over the course, every year over the course of a 25-year period is very, very aggressive. That is not only aggressive from a land use planning perspective and an infrastructure perspective, it's aggressive from a capital perspective. It's aggressive from a market rate, a market absorption perspective. It's aggressive probably from finding contractors and supplies and materials aggressive. So that's something else to keep in mind. Again, I think that's an example of things that are outside of our control. And it's something that I ask you to weigh when you're thinking about balancing these factors. What's the risk? Are we going to overplay, underplay? Recognizing there's a lot of potential factors that are going to relate to that achievement or not. Low-rise residential, we have been talking with the community for the last year that we envision a great expansion of our single-family districts to allow a multitude of housing typologies within all of those districts. Specifically, we've been talking about up to four units, 35 feet. I want to be clear that, that this can be a tension. I think when, when you hear me talking or you're talking about a height, I think on one hand, it's very helpful to relate a character or a goal to something we know and we can see in our community. But we also have to recognize that this process is setting our vision for what we want. And we might not know exactly what that height is. And I, I just want to admit, I find myself getting pulled back and forth within, within that terminology. And it's a balance that we have to be mindful of. We might not have all the answers to what that height is now, but I'm providing you with a lot of data because I think it's helpful for contextualizing how different types of development look in our experience in our community. So that when we're thinking about that, we know, we have tangible examples of what that looks like. Residential can be regulated by the number of units. It can be regulated by form or other dimensional standards or any combination of those things. And it doesn't have to include all those things. So here's some project examples of multiple, of differing scales. And both this and we provided an attachment of a lot of projects that we just wanted to provide examples of, of projects of differing height, differing densities, number of units. We added floor area ratio as a way of considering whether or not that might be a factor. I don't think it's a particularly good factor because so much of that development is realized on larger scale developments. At the same time, I tried to show some examples more contextual of, just take what building on a larger scale site. The FAR of Lockwood on Ellsworth is not very significant. However, if we were to regulate our low-rise residential to allow 45 feet in height and no limit on the number of residential units, I just want to be clear that this building could be realized in that zoning district. Again, there's a lot of factors, it might not be, but this is imposing just that building footprint, sans any other site attributes into what is now more of a current, single-family duplex oriented land use pattern. So they're just intended to be examples. We have had time over experience where projects that allow greater number of units have def, have been hampered by factors other than a limitation on units. This particular project is pretty infamous in the city. And the ultimate, one of the major factors that govern the number of units here was how much parking they could realize on site. So we've addressed that, but it just, it can happen in a lot of different ways, how different regulations can impact the scale, size and quantity of units in a development. This is a building that's 49 feet high at the comprehensive plan subcommittee. We were talking about a 48-foot high limit as, as a range of a construction typology that might be relatively affordable, sort of a stickover podium that's very common. Again, just showing an example of a building that might be approximate to that and, and for you to think about, is this the right scale that you envision seeing in R1, R2 neighborhoods? The question was asked, you know, do we have to regulate by the number of units? And of course, we do not. There are a lot of different ways that we can regulate. This comes from Smart Growth America, this image. It, it talks about a very simplistic way to that different development can be regulated. I would say that as you move from left to right here, the design cost, the process cost, the process time and costs, and probably the development costs all increase. I can't sit here and, I'm not going to pretend that there aren't ways that we could try to minimize that. But generally, I presume, I am making the assumption, even as a art designer, understanding all the regulations on the form-based code is going to be more complex and more time intensive than, oh, as long as I know I'm under this height and the setbacks, I can go forward. But there are ways to regulate without doing it by number of units, for sure. So some of the questions that we'll get to is, should low-rise residential replace our R1 and R2 district? Or do you envision something else? If so, what does it mean to you, to us? When we talk about the missing middle housing, what are the project examples that do or don't fall into that category, maybe a way to think about that? I'm drawing a line, I just arbitrarily put a line here on this category that I think it, sort of our conversation over the last year to oversimplify is including everything left of the line, probably in those R1 and R2 districts. But I don't think when we're talking about density, everybody was envisioning everything to the right of the line. And so what does that mean? How do we want to approach it? And then do we want a mass scale standard? Is that important to us? And on, at all? And if so, do we desire to do that through something other than a unit count? All right, getting to mixed-use areas, both hubs and corridors. So this, this context provides probably some of the most significant change and most status quo land use policies that the future land use map currently shows. First of all, it shows a lot of what we're calling mixed-use transit transition zones. These are a lot of the yellow corridors that you see along this that represent about 2,500 new acres of sort of corridor transit oriented scale development. We envision this to be podium, stickover podium ready, probably up to 75 feet. Could potentially have a contextual height limitation, but providing a lot of new housing opportunities on corridors, both significant transit corridors and corridors that don't have super robust transit yet, but have some transit on them. So these are areas that have a diversity of land use types, categories ranging from current R1 to commercial to other, other districts and represent still the opportunity for mixed use, higher density housing in a, a really greatly expanded footprint from a lot of the districts that exist there. Then we are identifying a series of what we're calling mixed-use hubs of sort of different characters. Those are roughly, they roughly correlate to what our current TC1 zoning is, but they actually expand the footprint of our current TC1. The, and we are envisioning a couple of different flavors or characters of these areas. To be clear, they all have the largest, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. These are some examples of what I envisioned for mixed-use transition corridors. Again, this is areas on corridors that are zoned a multitude of things and being consolidated, hopefully into a much more uniform and consistent and typical opportunity for housing. As we get into some of these mixed-use hubs, we see the opportunity for distinct character through some of these districts. These, again, roughly correspond to what is currently zoned TC1 in the city. And again, I said it, but I ask you to take that with a grain of salt. We are talking about what the character of these areas we desire. And this is one place where I've going a little bit more rogue than my consultant team is in that. I think that when we're talking about some of these areas, particularly the retail areas and the innovation hub, this is an area where I am very sensitive about our sphere of influence and the things that we can impact and the things that we can't impact. And so when we're talking about these areas, the consultant team is, is, you know, advising, look, in all of these zones, just to set the stage, we're talking about a very similar scale of development, probably some of the highest height in the city as they're currently zoned. All uses, all uses allowed in all districts. But, but then, when we're talking about a couple of the distinct categories of them, there's some questions that I'd like some feedback from the planning commission on. One is downtown and the state and Eisenhower corridors. This future land use map is identifying them as mixed-use hubs or basically downtown districts. The question in that regard is, does that character seem appropriate to the planning commission? That, that area near Briarwood, currently TC1, a job center with a lot of parking lots, but not a lot of the other amenities that makes a mixed-use 24-hour community proximate right there? Should those areas feature the same development potential, same form, same use pattern? The innovation corridor is an opportunity to think about a unique proximity to the University of Mission North Campus and some pretty significant changes in how the university is thinking about tech transfer and investment. The university has, I don't profess to be an expert, but here's my understanding. They have gone from more of a tech transfer licensing approach to more of an investment venture capital approach. And they have really upped their investment in startups and technologies over the last couple of years. And their provide, their plan provides a lot of growth opportunity to absorb a lot of that on campus. Absolutely. And a lot of it on North Campus. There's still may very well be opportunities where the uniqueness of a tax incentive or just space needs or other factors might be well-suited to providing private sector space for those spaces, those businesses and startups and, and growth sectors off-campus. And the innovation zone could be a way that we could do a couple of things. One, we could follow the city's economic goals, invest in economic development and find incentives to make sure that we are taking whatever steps we can to cultivate, support the location of those businesses there. That can happen, absolutely. The piece that I pose to you is, like employment zones that we've identified elsewhere on this map, residential is a very significant market pressure in our community. And we need housing. And we are proposing 98% of the city can be, is eligible for housing. As we talked about, the, the growth within those land use districts that we're talking about likely are going to exceed the capacity to reach those patterns over time. Do we want to take that little window of influence, whatever scale it is, and in this innovation zone, also use land use as a way to potentially limit that market pressure in that geography for that goal? That's another question that we, I posed to you. And then finally, with retail. Nobody's professing that retail is probably the most aspirational land use. These retail zones, however, are at interchanges. They're literally at highways. They provide a regional economic benefit. And through the current zoning, we have made incremental evolution of those things likely more challenging. And that is fine. We can, we can take that position. What that means is probably, the greater likelihood is that those would have to decline to such a state where the economics were in place to buy out leases, for the economics to work, to envision something of a much greater scale, size, transit orientation, pedestrian orientation than what, how they typically evolve today, which is retail autos, often auto-centric incremental development. which is retail, autos, often auto-centric incremental development. So I pose the question to you is, TC1 over the last three years has pretty much frozen those. We can sort of double down on that, that we want, we're going to sort of, I don't want to be this extreme, but we can hold the perfect, we can hold the good at bay or the slightly good at bay for the benefit of the really good or the perfect. And that's the question as it relates to retail, those retail centers at the interchanges, about whether or not we want to look for flexibility. Again, they're going to have a lot of development potential. Some of the examples that we've included in the presentation show a very significant scale of development in those retail areas, examples. But that's another piece of feedback we're looking for. I don't see this scale of development at those for a very long time. And maybe that's fine, because maybe that provides some affordable commercial space that might start being displaced in other areas of the city from housing demand. So, but that's another question. Again, consultant team, they're right there on Zoom. And if they were here, they'd be like, just remember, Brett, this doesn't have to be a regulatory framework. It could be an incentive-based framework as well. But I pose the question to you again. Do we want to put our thumb on this? In this case, it's almost more development form, relaxing some of our expectations that we have there now, or not? And I'm guessing there'll be some questions, and I'll do my best to answer them after the public hearing.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for that. If you want to have a seat too, Sean, feel free. All right, we're going to move on to public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We're going to first hear from those present and then the remote participants. To speak remotely, please press *9 on the phone or use the raise hand feature on Zoom. For phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-663-41226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom. You'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. And please ensure that you're in a quiet area, mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present that would like to speak at this time?
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
So I think this plan is just a few important changes away from being great, but there are some critical changes that should be made. And I think the most important is to remove the three districts that restrict or forbid housing. And I'm going to focus on the employment district, which is after the thank you in the presentation. It is an important district. And I think it's important first because it forbids housing entirely and also because it's very large. 384 acres is more than twice the size of the D1, D2 districts downtown. And it's 19 times the size of the proposed Arbor South Development, which would add 1,000 units of housing plus retail plus commercial. So there's an opportunity to allow for thousands of units of housing in South Ann Arbor. Also, there's an opportunity to attract employers by allowing housing. In post-COVID, remote-work-friendly America today, it's hard to attract office-only or research-only development. Residential can be the difference in what makes a development financially feasible. So you can attract jobs and housing at the same time. And I know there's a counterargument that we don't really need to worry about housing because we're going to get a minimum of 30,000 units in these other areas. But we've allowed housing on our commercial corridors for decades, and in many of them, there's been little to no housing built. So we need to allow housing in areas that currently does not allow housing if we expect to get more. And I know there's also concern about preserving industrial space. But keep in mind, 2,500 new acres are now open to responsible light industrial use that were previously only residential. All these mixed-use transition spokes on Maple and Miller and Huron, these are all new places to allow light industrial. So we don't need to exclude housing from South Industrial and Research Park. So please bring up the employment district tonight. It's really critical. And I know it wasn't one of the questions, but your role is more than just answering questions. You're co-creators of this plan. And I think you have an opportunity to help a lot of people in the city by bringing up that employment district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a note that that podium raises so not everybody has to crouch over like a little bit.
Hi, my name is Gabe Grossman. I am a student and I live in Old Fourth Ward. I would make two suggestions, two main suggestions. The first one is around the transit corridor. I think those transit corridors are way too narrow. And it's kind of leading to, it's going to lead to bad transit, height gradients because of how, yeah, narrow it is. And instead of you guys wanting to expand that outward and saying, hey, we can build out more in that direction, it seems like you guys.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're good.
You guys are pushing in the opposite direction where it is shortening that height limit, it seems like, around those transit corridors. The next part is about the Old Fourth Ward. Where I live, it seems, I know it's under historic preservation, but I would like to see, you know, it allow for more uses under this comprehensive plan. I live there and I have a lot of friends that live there. I've been to plenty of houses. And they are mainly just slumlord-owned houses that, I mean, there are a few very nice manicured lawns by, I assume professors or something in that neighborhood. But I, maybe not professors, people with plenty of money. But I think there are a lot of houses where we would like to see a student, that is a key neighborhood, that's near the university, that's near a lot of campuses. And just to see that sort of shut down to the lowest level of development is sad. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Levine, 456 Hildale. When cities and jurisdictions started eliminating single-family zoning in 2016, I was excited beyond belief. I thought this was the most exciting thing that had happened in my career. And it's a no-brainer, we have to do that. And yet, the experience tells us that those aren't the places that actually deliver the housing. The places that deliver the housing are places that offer actual high density on major corridors. So we can and should switch our single-family zone to the low-rise residential district. But we have to make sure that we're more amenable on our major corridors than we currently are to housing. So let's talk about our major corridors. The ones I want to focus on are South State, South Industrial, Washtenaw, Plymouth, North Main, and West Stadium. In two of those corridors, I feel like we're doing well with these plans. We've changed North Main to, from industrial to mid-rise residential, a step forward. South State, we keep it as amenable as it currently is to housing. The others are actually less amenable to housing than they currently are under our current zoning. So that goes for the retail areas of Washtenaw and West Stadium that require ground-floor retail in residential buildings under the current plan. Ground-floor retail is a very hard sell currently. And requiring ground-floor retail would be quite an impediment. The requiring 30%, only 30% of the buildings in our innovation district to be residential is another significant restriction. So in many ways, I feel like on our major corridors, we're going in the opposite direction. We have stated goals to alleviate the housing crisis in Ann Arbor, and in four out of the six, we're not doing so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Mr. West, oh, Mr. Westfall? Welcome.
Thank you. How does this go up? Oh, here we go. It's been a minute.
I tried it the other night and it didn't work.
It's not working? No?
Oh, just lift.
That's right. I'll stoop. Kirk Westfall, 3505 Charter Place. Thanks for this discussion tonight. I'd like to encourage you to approach this conversation perhaps by asking, where do I want to say that we should restrict housing? It feels like you're being presented this document and you were kind of going off in certain directions from there. I think during a lot of the public meetings, you saw an outpouring of people who, you know, put dots on paper and made comments that we should allow more housing everywhere, expand the downtown. And it seems like, I don't know what happened to those ideas. For example, the five-foot increase that's being floated for the plurality of city land, R1 and R2 only going up to 35 from 30. From what I heard from the Comprehensive Plan Committee, it sounded like there was a consensus around 48. And obviously, this doesn't mean that you could build 48 feet right next, you know, on your property line. Like, there's ways of stepping that back and making that more, you know, gentle relative to other parcels. But I'm wondering why that isn't being considered here. I'm also puzzled, as has been said before, about the restrictions and prohibitions on housing that have been floated in the past two versions. I would ask just to heed council's directive to expand housing possibilities and not impose mandates like office and retail. And my last concern is the transition zone that was created by the consultant. Not only does it outright downzone some areas, which I elucidated in my memo that are already TC1, I just don't understand why the consultant wanted to break apart what I think is an excellent zone, TC1, that self-adjusts to its, you know, low-rise neighbors. They're proposing breaking out hub and transition and spreading this transition over blocks and blocks and hundreds of acres of land, as opposed to letting stuff be high-density and then quickly taper down to the neighbors. It's almost giving neighbors license to say, I don't want high-density, not just on the next block or next to me, but for blocks and blocks away. I just would like some, to hear some justification for why so much is zoned in this 50-to-80-foot height. It would make five corners non-conforming, I think. It would make Beekman non-conforming. I just, I struggle with that sort of strained low-high-rise zone. Also, I think transition is going to be a difficult sell in some areas like Miller, just because it's the only instance where you're splitting R1 parcels into low-rise and transition. And I just don't think it's worth the fight. And I'm not sure you're going to get a lot out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak? Yes?
Hi.
Hello?
Try this one more time. No, I can only make it go lower.
Okay.
Oh, I'm pressing and lifting simultaneously. All right, I don't know how. So anyway, my name is Jim Pike. I live at 912 Pomona Road. And I see the timer started, awesome. I have been in favor of following the recently-ended Biden administration's recommendation to reduce or eliminate exclusionary single-family zoning throughout the United States since before that administration made that recommendation. I want to emphasize the word exclusionary in that phrase. Because I think some, maybe even many, people hear the phrase eliminate single-family zoning and immediately have visions of people being forced from the detached, single-family houses they currently live in to be herded into featureless 50-story concrete apartment blocks. Adding the word exclusionary, however, makes the phrase into a both-and statement instead of an either-or one. If we liberalize residential zoning so that it's acceptable, maybe even somehow incentivized, to build some multifamily buildings mixed into neighborhoods where detached, single-family houses predominate, then we create more opportunities for more housing that more people can potentially afford. I want to see more and taller housing structures downtown and along transit corridors. And I want Ann Arbor to eliminate exclusionary single-family zoning so that we have a broader range of options for new housing here. More options are better than fewer when people are househunting, and a lot of people are househunting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who would like to speak?
Might raise this up a little bit more, if possible.
See, luck!
I'm not strong enough. Anyways, my name is Max. I'm Gabe's roommate. I live at 722 East Kingsley also, and thank you for having us. I just want to say, I was a little bit surprised when I first saw the comprehensive plan and that our neighborhood, Old Fourth Ward, isn't seeing any change. I thought it was really surprising because, living there, it is, I guess, a historic district. But I think the preservation of it in that way, there's a lot of emphasis on the old part of the Old Fourth Ward, because it's becoming, honestly, decrepit, I think is the first word that comes to mind. I would invite any of you to come over to our house if you would like a little tour of the basement. I describe it more of sandcastle texture than mortar. And I know a lot of my neighbors' students have a similar situation. So I would just implore you all to add that little bubble of single-family zoning that is, for some reason, going untouched into the realm of stuff we're looking at improving, renewing, revitalizing, strengthening. Because as much as we love the look of these old buildings, and I can't always agree with that because from the outside, they're aging as well. I think it's more important that the people that live there have good living conditions and don't have to worry about leaks and worry about floors cracking and worry about how much they're going to have to pay on their utility bill. Because as Gabe and I know, our front door is more of an air conditioner this time of the year than an entrance. So I would just ask that you take into account that neighborhood. I know there are some good buildings there, but I think totally excluding it from any sort of upgrades and development is probably a mistake, and especially in such a nice part of town where more people want to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matthew Ostrowski, 2944 Birch Hall Drive. I just kind of wanted to go off what Kirk was. Going off of, I'm not really knowledgeable on all details of planning and everything, but I'll give you a perspective of someone who sold their car recently and bikes around. And also, I was in a recent accident involving a car, and I have to walk and, you know, I walk in bus around. I don't think having, you know, all of these different zoning districts is really like, you know, a smart move. As someone who like, you know, for example, you know, when I take the bus up to work, I have to take a transfer. And it's not always, you know, feasible for me to or convenient for me to have to, you know, do that. You know what I mean? So when I am, what I'm trying to say is that in these, like, if we have like these office zoning districts and like all these things, it's going to make it harder for people to get places. And it's not going to really incentivize them to use transit, to use, you know, the bike around. Because in reality, people want to get places, you know, conveniently and fast and whatnot. And yeah, just kind of like perspective, you know, as someone who's been overseas, you know, I've been to Japan. I often give the example, I biked and took trains in Japan, and I never biked more than three miles one-way. And in those three miles, you would encounter coffee shops, arcades. Here, you know, biking two miles, you're only going to encounter single-family homes. And, you know, it takes even longer walking. So if we're separating things out, and it almost feels like it's more restrictive than the current zoning, the proposal. So I think having, you know, obviously more densification, but also just really limiting how many zoning districts we have. My favorite, you know, coffee shop is the Red Roost Cafe, I believe it's called. It's in the, one of the neighborhoods in South Industrial. It's in the, one of the neighborhoods in South Industrial. It takes me, like, you know, almost 40 minutes to walk there. And I mean, it's mostly through single-family home areas, and I got to cross Eisenhower. And, you know, it doesn't feel safe crossing that road, number one, walking. And number two, I mean, it's a 40-minute walk. So if there were more, like, places to go, I feel like that would be better for the community and also, you know, just, you know, having more things nearby within walking distance, not having, you know, transit corridors with only housing and separating everything out. Like, it feels like this is going to make things worse. So, yeah.
Thank you, Matthew.
Hi.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Ina. I also live in the Old Fourth Ward. I work at U of M. I'm sorry, I'm a little shy, but I wanted to support or express my support for not restricting residential areas anywhere. I've been renting here for the last six or seven years, so I'm experiencing firsthand how severe, like, the housing crisis is right now. People are so insanely desperate for housing. I have so many things that I could say about this. I myself have done some very desperate things to assure that I have housing. I've slept in closets of my roommate's rooms even when I'm on the lease for that apartment. I've rented places that aren't designed to be livable, that are crumbling, that still cost thousands of dollars a month to live in. And no matter how atrocious the conditions, like, the rent still goes up every single year. It still costs way too much because the demand is so high, like, housing is so scarce. And that means that me and many, many other people I know have to move apartments every single year. Like, I've lived in a new apartment every single year that I've lived in Ann Arbor. Like, I've moved to a different place because the prices keep pushing me out, which also means that me, like, people like me are homeless for two weeks out of every single year when we're switching leases, because there's no lease overlap because of the way, like, all these leases are, because of, like, the student schedules. And so some of my coworkers, they take, like, a different approach. They know they can't find housing here, so they commute several hours out, and they come here two hours before their shift starts, and they sleep in their car, like, until their shift starts, like, in a freezing parking structure, because they, they know they can't find parking, even with a parking pass that they pay for, and they know they can't find housing here. And I'm sorry to, like, bring up all these, like, personal anecdotes, but I bring these up because the consultants have some concerns with allowing housing everywhere. Specifically, what I, what stuck with me was, they said, "Do we risk a reverse commute as jobs are forced out of the city and lose ground on the goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled?" And I just have to say in response to this that, like, 80,000-plus people commute into Ann Arbor for their jobs. We have not even come remotely close to providing the amount of housing needed for all these people, like, and not even including people like me who already live here, where housing is, like, definitely not enough to go around. South Industrial in particular was marked as an area to not allow housing, but I think it's an ideal place to have housing. It's near campus, it's near other, like, retail venues, it's on major bus routes, like, it's on a bus route that I take every single day down South Industrial. So all this to say, please remove, like, the Employment District or, like, any districts that, like, restrict housing. I know maybe this wasn't supposed to be the agenda item. I don't really know how to do this, but I just wanted to express this, like, as a longtime renter. Yeah, please don't restrict housing anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hey there.
Hi.
So thank you for having us tonight. My name's Matt Kirsch. I moved to town six months ago now from Portland, Oregon. And so I've only really kind of started paying attention to urban policy more recently, but finding it really interesting. Love that YouTube channel, city nerd. And so meeting people around town and meeting people who want to talk about this has been really cool. And I've been learning about the master plan and the progress, and I think it's really exciting. And I probably just want to echo a lot of what people have said already around housing, housing, housing. I mean, I think we all understand the need. And echoing, I guess, some of the ideas, simplification, it really seems like we need to make, I guess, development as easy as possible. I work in energy, and definitely navigating the rules about, around renewable energy projects, really, really challenging. So figuring out ways to make those types of things happen much more quickly, really important, of course. And so, yeah, I mean, I can't speak in detail about all of these topics tonight, but whatever it takes to make more housing happen more quickly for more people, I think that's really, really important. So thank you.
Yes. No, please come up. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Matt. Welcome to Ann Arbor.
Hi.
Hi.
Elise McCoy, 514 Lawrence. I'm very excited to see the move towards more mixed use within Ann Arbor. I've lived here for most of my life, though I've taken other years in larger cities and, like, Boston and Detroit. And so I'm excited to see more mixed use come here. I wanted just to speak a little bit to the South Industrial corridor. Before I moved to the Old Fourth Ward, I lived at East Park Place and Rose, which is, like, a block away from where Park Place becomes South Industrial. And when I lived there, I walked to a lot of the businesses in South Industrial. Lucky's, when it was Lucky's, CVS, Buy the Pound, Salvation Army, Prostation, a lot of them. And that was part of the reason that my family moved to that part of Burns Park, was because even though it was, like, directly residential right around us, we could cross over into a more walkable area. And I think that other people would benefit from being able to walk to those kind of businesses to meet their daily needs. Particularly, I walked to Salvation Army a lot. A few times, I jogged down to the PTO thrift shop. Being able to have, like, secondhand stores, like, more affordable places available on foot was really beneficial. I think it would also benefit those businesses to have more people that are living near to them. I don't think you're going to get that unless you allow housing within that corridor. Only so many people are going to cross over stadium to walk into that area. It's a little prohibitive. But if you had people living right there, they could frequent those businesses. Like, one that comes to mind, I still go to the PTO thrift shop. That parking lot is tight. It's hard to get in there. I think it would benefit them if people could access it on foot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening. I'm Brian Chambers. I live in the Third Ward, 2815 Ember Way. There's a number of planners on the Planning Commission. I think that's fantastic. There's a number of planners in the audience here. I have a planning degree from 1986, from the master's program here, and a doctorate in planning. So we're all planning professionals to a greater degree. I really appreciate that. And as the Comprehensive Plan was unfolding, and I was meeting with the project teams and listening to all of the hubbub around it, I was greatly encouraged. And I was thinking, this is an A-plus, all of the plans coming forward. It was like, fantastic! And then in the fall, it's like, it changed. Brett talked about a change in the fall. I'm not sure what the escalating event was or that critical event was, but now it's as if there's a stakeholder group that's here but not here. I don't know who we're negotiating with anymore. I'm not sure that we've maintained our backbone necessarily. I think you're going to combine R1 and R2. I think that's almost a foregone conclusion. But you seem to, the project team, seems to have backpedaled a little bit on some of the vision for increasing the scale of housing throughout Ann Arbor. I'm not sure what changed that. Maybe the retailers that own up on Maple, you know, because there was the hubbub on TC1 when that got made there, and the 40-year leases and everything else, and all of a sudden, no, we can't do that. Well, we probably shouldn't do it then for the Innovation Districts. We probably shouldn't do that for the Employment Districts. And now, all of a sudden, you're backpedaling. Where happened to the vision of a walkable Ann Arbor? Mixed-use, transit-oriented-based Ann Arbor? I'm missing it in the plan right now. I really want to be encouraging. I'm grading the current plan a B. I have an academic background. We give grades, right? You give grades. So you're at a B. I think a lot of people were here, were saying, yeah, this is all looking really good, but I have these concerns and those concerns. That's a lot of red lines on the paper. So I'm really encouraging you to do something different. Give strong feedback. Don't just ask questions. You're molding and melding this plan. Do it. I'm concerned that you're just going to ask your questions, it's going to go back to the project team, and they'll say, well, I guess we can keep on in the same direction. I'm hoping, I'm going to stay here, I hope everyone else does, for a robust debate. Hey, what do you think you're doing? Make that change, make this change. How many people here are homeowners? Don't answer that question, it's rhetorical. How many people have bought a home in the last three years? The real question is how many people could afford to purchase their current home at current prices? The median price of an Ann Arbor home listed in the summer was $600,000. $120,000 down payment, $4,500 a month. 8% increase last year. By 2027, it'll be $750,000. By 2031, it'll be $1 million, the median price of a home in Ann Arbor. If you're going to restrict housing in this future plan, all I can say is, what reality are you living in? I'm sorry, I'm just being a little obtuse here, because I want to nudge you to make some decisions and give some concerted direction back to the project team that I don't think they've gotten yet. Because a lot of these comments came up from the Steering Committee, the same review at the Steering Committee, the same authors here wrote their papers, got them attached to the document in the Steering Committee. Nothing changed. So, put a smile on my face by the end of the meeting. Give some direct feedback. Meld this plan. It's yours. That's what Brett said. It's your plan. Don't just send it back. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other folks present that would like to speak at this time? Yes.
Hello. My name is Kate. I live on North State Street, and I'm a nurse. I work at the nursing school now, but spent the last decade working at Michigan Medicine. I want to talk again about the Employment District and specifically that area on South Industrial that keeps coming up, because it's such a gem of an area. But, yeah, I understand the instinct to want to preserve parts of the city as they are. I feel that instinct myself sometimes, but that instinct is the same thing that's keeping Ann Arbor so expensive for so many people. And we need more housing. So my coworkers at the hospital would love a shorter commute before their 12-hour shifts, but they can't afford to live here. It's not all of them. My brother-in-law, he works in heating and cooling. He services furnaces all over the city. He cannot afford to live in the city. We need more housing, and you all have such a wonderful opportunity to make a difference. Yes. I guess I ask you to speak with the consultants or however that exactly works, to see if they will allow residential in that area, specifically the industrial area, which is very near to my heart. I've logged a lot of hours on industrial, between the laundromat and Bennys and Roostroast. It would be a really lovely area to have mixed use, I think. So, good job, and let's keep doing good things, and thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Khalil. I actually live in Ipsy Township now, but moved, just moved there kind of within the last year. I went to U of M for undergrad, and I'm currently a graduate student there, and I've lived in Ann Arbor for almost a decade. I was renting the whole time, and as Ina said, had to move every time, right? And I think, yeah, the prices, we just kept going up every time. And my lovely wife works at U of M. Thankfully, she works remote, so we don't have to have a hu, well, she doesn't have to have a huge commute, but I, when I go to the office on campus, I take, you know, a couple buses to get there. It takes me, like, an hour to get there. I don't have a problem with it, you know, as it is, but I understand that for other people, this is way worse. So having more housing and more opportunities to build new housing, I'm all for that idea. And so restricting those zones, I would say I am heavily against that. But, so that's all I think I could say, because I don't know anything about planning and all this, but, yeah, that's my two cents, so thank you.
Thank you, Khalil. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Yeah.
Hello. Mark Skirbo. I'm a Steering Committee member, and I've already written you a three-page wall of text. Feel free to read at your leisure. I guess I wanted to take a moment and talk about some of the challenges that I felt when trying to give you that feedback. I live in a single-family neighborhood, 70s-era houses with big setbacks. And when I think about somebody building a four- or five-story apartment building there, it's hard to imagine. It seems like it just wouldn't fit. And what I've been thinking about more recently is, as I think about trips I've taken to Boston or Chicago, and not to the downtown, but to the neighborhoods around the downtown, I think about the Brooklyn Brownstones or the Chicago, I think, three units, three floors. They have some name for that kind of classic Chicago building. These are neighborhoods where these kinds of missing-middle houses with zero setbacks are common and fit into the neighborhood character. That is something that we could have in Ann Arbor. And frankly, that's something that we need to have in Ann Arbor if we want to bring housing affordability, housing affordability here. And so even though it might be challenging to imagine that apartment building in a single-family neighborhood now, when writing this Comprehensive Plan, we need to think about not just the next three years and the next five years, the next 10 years, but really the next 40 years, 50 years, 100 years. How can we write a plan that is flexible and that allows the city to change organically to meet the needs of residents, commuters, new people who might move here? So I encourage you, as you write this, to think ambitiously. Think big, think flexibly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time?
Okay. With that, do we have any remote callers?
We do. Adam Jiskavich. You can address the Plan and Commission for up to three minutes.
Hi, this is Adam Jiskavich, calling from 1430 Las Vegas Drive in the Fourth Ward. Not the old, but the new Fourth Ward. Overall, I like many things about this plan. The simplification of districts is great, and I'm glad to see small-scale commercial uses and additional residential density by right in the low-rise residential district that replaces our current R1 and R2 districts. I'm extremely comfortable with my own 1950s tract home neighborhood changing and densifying due to these changes, and urge you not to water this down. I absolutely would consider bungalow courts, townhouses, and, yes, three flats to be appropriate in low-rise residential. In fact, I would be comfortable with even more density and height here. I do share some concerns raised by several people who have written to you and spoke to you tonight on the subject. First, I note the mixed-use transition district is quite a bit more restrictive in terms of height than our existing TC1 districts. And it's troubling that we're anticipating downzoning parts of the current TC1 corridors to this new district. I don't see a need for this. TC1 already adjusts based on nearness to residential zones. Perhaps current TC1 areas should all be hubs, or perhaps we should bring the TC1 height rules into this district. Secondly, I do not see the need for these retail, innovation, or employment districts. We have a housing crisis, not a job, entertainment, and dining for the region, and I do not see this changing because we allow more housing to be built. While I understand the intent here, I don't agree. I don't think we should subsidize these uses at the expense of housing. Perhaps there's another way we can do this without limiting land use. And finally, I think we really need to figure out a way to calm traffic on these corridors. I get that it isn't really part of what we're doing with the Comprehensive Plan, but many of these could be termed car sewers, not exactly attractive places to live when there's, you know, vast, loud traffic right outside your door. We need to find a way to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Adam Goodman. You can unmute and have three minutes to address the Commission.
First, I note the mixed-use transition district is quite a bit more restrictive in terms of height than our existing TC1 districts, and it's troubling that we're anticipating downzoning parts of the current TC1 corridors to this new district. I don't see a need for this. TC1 already adjusts based on nearness to residential zones. Perhaps current TC1 areas should all be hubs, or perhaps we should bring the TC1 height rules into this district. Secondly, I do not see the need for these retail, innovation, or employment districts. We have a housing crisis, not a job, entertainment, and dining for the region, and I do not see this changing because we allow more housing to be built. While I understand the intent here, I don't agree. I don't think we should subsidize these uses at the expense of housing. Perhaps there's another way we can do this without limiting land use. And finally, I think we really need to figure out a way to calm traffic on these corridors. I get that it isn't really part of what we're doing with the comprehensive plan, but many of these could be termed car sewers, not exactly attractive places to live when there's, you know, vast, loud traffic right outside your door. We need to find a way to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Adam Goodman, you can unmute and have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, thanks. Adam Goodman, 400 Virginia Avenue. So like many others, you've heard from, I'd say my biggest concern is about proposing districts that would restrict housing. And so I think we should be really clear here that what we're talking about is using the land use regulation to subsidize less valuable land uses. You know, in the employment non-residential district, we talk about not allowing housing to outcompete, I mean, that means that we are artificially suppressing property values to do that. And in the, you know, mixed-use retail or innovation office, whatever, you're sort of, you're doing some combination of that and then also forcing developers to internally subsidize those uses by potentially making the housing component be higher-priced, you know, extremely unaffordable housing. And so, you know, all of this is sort of, is kind of, to me, I think it's the dead opposite of what we want to do if we want to meet our goals around affordability, equity, and, you know, protecting and growing the tax base for that matter. And so, you know, I hear you on diversification. If I were trying to build out an investment portfolio for myself, then, yeah, you know, diversification is a good thing, right? But what I'm not going to do is I'm not going to go out for, you know, a particular slice, type of asset. I'm not going to pay, you know, a hugely inflated price to get, to get an asset. You know, lighting money on fire is not a sound investment strategy. We're actually really fortunate in Ann Arbor that we typically don't have to subsidize new developments, you know, you look at Detroit for a very different situation, and, you know, I think that's great, and we shouldn't do it when it's not necessary. You know, that said, Mr. Leonard said a very interesting sentence at the very end of the presentation that was, this doesn't have to be a regulatory framework, with, you know, great point. If we're going to do subsidies or incentives, it's probably better to just do them directly because doing it through regulations is a really inelegant way to do that because it creates a mandate, not just an incentive.
30 more seconds.
As for, you know, the retail district actually seems to have two questions. One is about, you know, demand, you know, requiring retail and restricting housing, but the other is about kind of allowing more flexibility for incremental changes to the existing form. I know Kirk Westphal is going to give me a look for this, but I think that's actually a legitimate question. I think it's worth pointing out that basically every supermarket in Ann Arbor has been made non-conforming by TC1, with a couple exceptions, but at least all the Krogers, right? And so, you know, I do think we need to think about, you know, do we need some relief there to make sure that we don't drive those businesses out of the city entirely? But then again, maybe the ZBA just is that, is that relief, maybe that's enough, I don't know. I think it's worth discussing, though. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Do we have other callers on the line?
No other hands raised.
Okay. Okay. First off, thank you for all of the public feedback, super helpful, and gives me hope on the civic engagement side of things. So with that, there's no movement here, all we're doing is a feedback session, and I think the way to talk through this is actually the framing of the questions that were done, but I would actually first like to start with that question of where would we not like housing? And so, if any commissioners want to kick us off, we're just going right into discussion. Commissioner White?
Unfortunately, I'm not going to answer your question. I want to start with what Mr. Chambers said, because he stated what I perceived, which is, we have a hidden stakeholder in our conversations, and I say that because I've been paying attention, like a lot of you have, to this conversation about what we're trying to achieve. For instance, we had a robust conversation about the 48-foot height limit, and it got removed. It got removed completely from the consultant's presentation, it got removed from the public presentation at the library, and in your comments tonight, it's still removed because you started with a 30-foot, a 30, a 30, yeah, 30-foot, 5-foot height limit. And so, it's confusing to me because if we're consistently giving the same feedback, but every time the feedback is aggregated and re-presented to us, and it's missing the feedback, that tells me somebody, somewhere, is getting rid of it. So they're, they're hearing it, they're processing it, and then they're eliminating it. And I'd like that person to be known so that we can understand, because if we are, in fact, as you articulated, the co-authors of this, then can we create a framework where we're voting then? Like where we have records of what we're saying, and they are sort of tracked so that we can see, here was the discussion, here is where we agreed, now where does it show up? I'll go back to the chair's question about where don't I want housing? I don't, I don't know that there are any places in the city that I would exclude housing. And to Mr. Leonard's question around the missing middle, I don't, I don't agree with that line. I don't think there should be a line on the missing middle in the residential neighborhoods. In my own neighborhood, I welcome townhouses, I would welcome, what is it, 12 flats, three flats. I grew up in the inner-city of Washington DC, my family owned roadhouses, they were all, you know, budding and adjacent, three to four stories, and that's how our family built wealth. We were in duplexes, I moved every year, so I, I really understand what the audience is talking about. When I grew up in DC, we moved year after year after year. When I came to Ann Arbor, I rented on the north side, I tried to rent on Crest, but I had a roommate who didn't pay an electric bill, and so the landlord rejected us. You know, it was like an architect, a computer scientist, and a graphic designer, like, what better, you know, sort of tenants could you get? And then I got into a county house before I was able to buy my house. But again, I think Mr. Chambers' point of, I've been in my home now for 18 years, and you are absolutely correct. My house has appreciated, so my wealth has grown up, my kids know this, we have a trust, they know exactly how much money they're going to get unless they kill us, and it's going to go all to charity if they plot that way. But, you know, we are, we are absolutely wealthy because of the appreciation of our home value, and it would be hard for us to buy our exact house today. And I don't want that for my kids, I don't want that for future residents of the city, so I want an abundance of housing, to your question.
Okay, thank you. So, I want to proffer just a little bit of clarification because where that 48 feet came from, I think we had a discussion about this at the comp plan meeting, and I'll just explain my train of thought when I had brought that up, which was, to me, to the extent that's feasible, I would like to try to eliminate conflicts with the Michigan Building Code relative to zoning code, so that a developer doesn't have to necessarily look at multiple sources to say like, oh, this is what I can do under Michigan Building Code, but for some reason it has different definitions than zoning. And so, I was looking at type 3 construction, wood frame, non-sprinkler residential, you can do up to 55 feet above the grade. The 48 feet specifically came from some of the proposals that we were getting, I think it was Lockwood, but I think that was actually 40, 43? But I was trying to combine the practicality of trying to eliminate conflict points between zoning and the Michigan Building Code, and I think we actually also were talking about the residential code at one point as well, but it helps to reduce conflicts and to try to create some level of legibility and streamline things so that, again, a developer doesn't have to look at multiple points and say, oh, this is what is actually creating the least amount of buildable height for me. And so, that's where that comment came from. Also, it has to do with, generally a floor is about 12 feet, and so on wood, construction, non-sprinkler, you'd think generally you'd squeeze out four floors if you could. Now, I think that there's a question to be had, which is one of the questions that we have to talk about, which is, you know, what is an appropriate, you know, the last thing we want are ugly, obtrusive, right, like larger, completely out of scale and non-legible things that impact building form, right? Because even if it's, because ultimately, there's a charm to specific neighborhoods, et cetera. That being said, we do have to add, again, additional denser housing. And so, what is the correct balance? I think that's the question we're here to deliberate. I wanted to at least provide that kind of clarification as to where that number came from, and it has to do with the elimination, to the extent possible, between conflicts of multiple different types of codes, zoning and Michigan Building Code. And then also, what is economically feasible from thinking through, if this doesn't work for two stories based on the overall cost basis of the land, what makes it feasible for a developer to say, okay, if I can do an additional third and fourth floor? And so generally, the topology that we've seen with most affordable housing proposals have been four stories on a pure stick build proposal. So I just wanted to provide that clarity, but I will follow that up with prompting some of the other commissioners to ask, what does low-rise residential mean to you? And so, I invite another commissioner to respond to that. Commissioner Adams?
I'm going to answer that, and then I'll answer some other things. So, I think, I tend to think about the questions that you've asked, less in terms of what are we allowing and what do we want, and more about what we don't want, what are we banning, what are we prohibiting? That's a professional habit that I have, and I think this is useful framing because I think the only thing we can say about the plan that we're working on here is that what we prohibit and what we make less likely to occur, that's what's going to happen. If we ban something, we're not going to get it, if we make it less likely to occur, we're going to get less of it. I have a harder time engaging with questions about what we want certain districts to look like. What do we want low-rise residential to feel like? It's easier for me to think about, well, what is a 48-foot or a 30-foot height restriction ban? With respect to low-rise, I think, you know, I was looking online at a 48-foot stacked triplex, and that seemed like an example of gentle infill that low-rise residential really ought to be able to accommodate. Again, thinking about what are we trying to ban? It also feels like we can allow that, but also ban things like Lockwood being plopped down in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It feels like we ought to be able to write a plan and zoning that can accomplish those things and do so with clarity so that people like me who don't know what a stick, I can't remember what you said, stick build? I don't know what stick build is, but people who are going to be reading this and digesting it understand what a height limit is, understand what a set, set dimensional standards make sense, form, mass. I've read the definition of FAR a million times, and I can't apply it, and I barely understand it. And I think that's, that's a political problem that a clear plan will solve, and so when I'm thinking about what does low-rise mean, I'm thinking about what are we trying to prohibit? And I, when I'm looking at the final version of the plan, I'm going to apply strict scrutiny around anything that would operate to ban something that we ought to allow. It may seem simplistic, but that's kind of how I'm processing the question that you're asking. With respect to the other question, which is, relates to this, sections of the city where the plan is either going to make residential development, I'll say restricted, I don't support that. I think the premise of any district that restricts housing is that we need to use the law to restrict property owners from developing real estate in accordance with what the market deems to be the highest and best use of that real estate. Right now, we have office and retail space downtown that's not being occupied, ground floor retail that's not being occupied. The DDA's most recent state of the downtown document indicated an office vacancy rate of around 15% with a footnote that that might be conservative because leases haven't expired yet. If that's right, I mean, that certainly seems intuitively correct. Meanwhile, we have a rental vacancy rate that's near zero, functionally zero. We might like the idea of more office space, more retail, we might like the idea of a more diverse local economy, but we currently have housing crisis, we can say that, but crisis means, you know, crisis. And every reasonable projection that I've seen says we're not climbing out of that for the foreseeable future, so we can't plan around it not being a crisis, we're going to be living in it for a while. So I don't think we can prioritize hypothetical nonexistent office or retail uses in any zone in any quantity over actual existent residential demands and needs that the community has. There are a couple other reasons I think this. First is I think the notion that we need to maximize business or entrepreneurial development or reserve certain areas of the city for uses other than residential is incompatible, in my opinion, with the command of the April 2024 Economic Development Resolutions, which directed us to prioritize housing construction at all income levels permissively throughout the city. I think the essential premise of these districts is that, that, that any, any district that restricts housing and makes it harder to build is the opposite, in my opinion, from permissive, it's restrictive. So I think legislatively, we have a direction to go in the opposite direction that, that these mixed-used hubs and districts would have us go. As multiple commentators pointed out, these restrictions that are aimed at holding or restricting land from being developed into what we need in favor of what we might need tomorrow are, in effect, a legal subsidy. We're transferring wealth from one set of people to another, we're transferring wealth from the people who own the property who might want to sell it for a higher use, we're inhibiting the useful redevelopment of the zones, we're shrinking the tax base, we're requiring new residents to subsidize anything that goes into that building that we're requiring that doesn't get occupied, to sub, to basically subsidize that with their rents or their mortgage. None of those dynamics, I think, are desirable from a policy perspective, but there's one more dynamic that we're also subsidizing if we restrict housing development in any zone, and that's we subsidize the university as it continues to gobble up and cannibalize our tax base. We ought to be upzoning to highest and best use, and that is one of the tools in our toolbox that operates as a bulwark against this kind of land expansion that is hurting taxpayers and hurting the city. So anything, again, that depresses the value of a property is making it easier for the university to buy it and take it off the tax rolls. We don't need to, I think, the premise of holding this land or restricting it from residential use is that we need to fight displacement, but we know from slide 26 in the deck that that effect is already being arrested by existing leasehold interests in property, by the fact that it's hard to redevelop something, it's hard to acquire it. We know that we're not seeing a lot of housing redevelopment in commercial districts, we're not seeing it in TC1 districts. That's because places like Brixmore have an existing commercial interest, they have existing leases, it's very sticky to overcome that dynamic. I don't think we need to add new layers of law on top of those existing contracts and other devices that are functionally doing that work for us if arresting housing development is something we want to pursue. I'm going to stop talking now.
Thanks, Commissioner Adams. Do we have other commissioners that want to add? Yes, Commissioner Wetherby?
So this is probably going to be a little rambling, I'm just making some notes here about some various questions that were asked, and so, where don't I want housing? And I have a pretty strong feeling that I don't want housing in floodways, and I think that that's a reasonable place to not put housing, and I think we have not always done that in the past, and I think that I'm pretty confident that I'm, that floodways are not a place to put housing. Other than that, I'm pretty ambivalent as to not putting housing in someplace because I think I've lived in this city for a really long time, and things change. And what, I grew up on the north side, everybody thought at that point that there was going to be so much development, and then development went south, and things were developed in another part of the city, Briarwood came in, I'm old, and, you know, everything, things didn't get developed in the north side. So, and then Pfizer went away, and, you know, it was a huge thing, this was going to be the death knell of the city, and it was not great. And then the university took up all that land, which was semi-terrible, but also an opportunity. And I think for every zone, there are opportunities, there are things that happen, there are good things and bad things, restricting housing in any place just seems like, we don't know what's going to happen, but we know people need places to live. And... There are good things and bad things. Restricting housing in any place just seems like, we don't know what's going to happen, but we know people need places to live. And sort of dovetailing on the floodway, we are seeing a lot of climate change, and this part of the country is probably going to see climate refugees. People in New Orleans know what snow is like now, so, you know, are the things that we have, that people have tended to stay away from. In the future, we may want more. And so I just think restricting housing is a bad idea. I would like to just note to the people in the Old Fourth Ward, historic districts are really hard to touch. What we can do with historic districts, I live in an old house, love old houses, they don't have to be crappy. They often are because of the people who own old houses, not because of the houses themselves. What we can do, and we're already seeing this, I sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals, we are now seeing people upgrading old houses because there is new building. And people have always said, hey, new building will make people upgrade old housing. It's very slow. But it does start to happen, and we are seeing that now, that some of these older buildings are getting renovated. They're going to have laundry. They're going to have more bathrooms. They're going to have fire protection that is actually legit and good, and windows that open, and doors that are not screens, and things that actually make for good living. So, but unfortunately, I think there's a lot more, we can do a lot more not pushing against the historic districts. And other people may disagree with that, but just historic districts are state designations and sometimes federal designations, and it's really difficult for the city to do much with And then missing middle. So one of the things that I've noticed, so we've given the example of Davis Row. So Davis Row is across the street from me, and there are actually two sets of, there's Davis Row, and then there's another set of condos from down the street. These both took single, I think it was a total of three single-family houses. And the interesting thing about Davis Row, we talk about missing middle, but they are expensive condos. And the houses down from them are even more expensive condos. And people were really upset about taking down these single-family homes and building condos until they found out they were expensive condos. Because it turns out, missing middle has a lot of connotations, and some of it is type of housing, and some of it is who's going to live in the housing. And we get a lot of people who say, I don't want that type of housing, until they know who's going to live in the housing. And they change their minds, depending on if there are going to be rich people living in that housing or not rich people living in the housing. And I sat in on some really interesting meetings where people's opposition to new building changed dramatically when they found out there were going to be a million-dollar condos, because that meant their housing would go up, their single-family home was not going to be worth less, it was going to be worth more. And so I think one of the things when we talk about missing middle is, it's not just a housing type, because housing types, depending on how they're marketed and finished, can actually be more expensive than the single-family homes that were there. So I think that's why I don't see a line on the missing middle, because I think it's so varied. And I think more units is good, but some of those units are going to be really expensive. And it's just the way it is.
Councilmember Dish.
I want to get into some of the, I want to get into things that I'm not fully qualified to talk about, but I do want to get into the details. And so I'll say some things, and then if I make mistakes, people can jump in and help us think them through. But, so, one thing I did want to say is that I do think that it is important to remember that if we're going to allow greater density in what's now R1 and 2, that that does not necessarily mean prices are going to come down. Because we are seeing that happen, for example, along Ashley. There's a lot of greater density there, and it is really expensive housing. Now, I'm not saying that that's necessarily bad, because we get good tax base, whatever, whatever. But where we're going to make a dent in our affordability crisis is by getting housing along our corridors. And there are two kinds of corridors, I feel as though this plan calls out, which is different than the way we've been thinking about corridors before. We were thinking about corridors in terms of our TC-1 corridors. So Plymouth, I don't need to do the list, we know the list. This plan calls out streets that are major arteries in town, but I don't think we would have called them corridors before. And that's part of what's recommended as mixed-use transition. I like that part of this plan. I like the new corridors as mixed-use transition. I don't know if they will work because of what's on there now. So I don't know if you would have to assemble so many parcels to get greater density along those that it's going to matter what we zone them, but I still think it's worth zoning them. And I think it is worth making a distinction between, and again, I am not a trained planner, although if I could go back, I would be. But, what I see as the advantage along the corridors of the mixed-use transition zoning is that it's a little less tall when it butts up against low-rise residential. So it's 55 within 50 feet. TC-1 is 55 within 80 feet. I mean, actually, that is more permissive. And then it's, TC-1 is 75 within 80 to 300 feet. So, I mean, actually, the transit, actually, now I've confused myself, because I'm looking at it again. Okay, so actually, let me ask, what are we gaining? Now I'm wondering, what we are gaining by having a separate district for those corridors, which are more like arteries than they are corridors? Why don't we just zone them TC-1? Because they're not going to get up to 300 feet. So I think that makes sense. But, okay, and I'm happy if someone was going to jump in and tell me what I'm not seeing about the distinction that's being added. I do want to wonder why we would downzone parts of TC-1 to this new category. That doesn't make sense to me. And though I'm open to the new category for the arteries, right now, I've completely turned myself sort of inside out about understanding what the value added is of adding this, rather than just extending TC-1. So that is one thing, and perhaps I should leave it there and just come back later. But the other things I wanted to ask about were some of the premises around the idea of the employment district. And I wanted to really confront the question of South Industrial. So it feels like there's two areas of South Industrial here. There's an area that's north of 94, and there's an area that's south of 94. And we have had discussions and calls since we started zoning TC-1, which is quite a while ago now, that South Industrial be included in that. And that's what I'm hearing again, is a desire that at least the part of South Industrial that's north of 94 be zoned TC-1. And I just think it's time, we need to put that question on the table. But I also think that we need to take seriously some questions of land uses that we would desire, that there will be opportunity costs if everything is, if residential floods into parts. And I'm not sure that we need to worry about flood, but, okay. You see where I'm making, okay. So the, when you mention enjoying going to thrift stores and the produce station, those take a lot of land. And so what's being asked for here is for us to be mindful that there are uses that we might want in the city that might not be tax-based intensive, but they might contribute to our sustainability goals. One thing that the folks who do thrift stores are telling us is that they need places to store stuff. And they don't want to go way out in the township, because that starts to be ridiculous. And I don't, honestly, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't have experience of any other cities. So I don't know if we allow residential everywhere, if we will have any land that's cheap enough for someone to make another thrift store, or make a storage space to put the furniture that people really want. But there's no, these thrift stores can't, they can't stock it, because they have no place to store. And so I am not dismissive of the concern that there are some land uses that we might want to hold space for. I'm not dismissive of that concern. But I am hearing the testimony to the ways that parts of South Industrial are exactly what we seek to promote, walkability in range of services, which doesn't have as much housing on it as it could have. So I'm just trying to be honest about the conflicts that I'm hearing and feeling, and then I'm confused if someone.
I got you. So I think the question was, why the mixed-use transition and not just TC-1? So maybe we could parse that one out, and I see that we have Ms. Chen with us.
Yeah. Let me start, and if Stacy, you and I had anything, please jump in. But first of all, I want to go back to where I started. Let's talk about zoning. Let's talk about vision. I don't know what your vision is for TC-1, but you have not yet seen anything built in TC-1. So when you were holding that up as an example of what you aspire to, I just ask that you do that with a little bit of grace, because we have yet, in three years and a square mile, to see a development built under that regulatory framework. So when you're talking about why not zone something to, why not just call everything TC-1, I just ask you to keep that in mind. One way that I think about the mixed-use transition district is that it might very well have a responsive height limitation, but it might not be the same as what our current TC-1 district is. Because perhaps it has more likelihood or more of an emphasis on residential and residential areas, it might not demand the same step back and height framework that a district of up to 300-foot buildings, let's keep that in perspective, very few circumstances, might be desired by our regulatory authority. So one way, one reason to do this is that it might not follow the same adjacent district reference impact that larger hubs do, or that what the TC-1 does today. So that might be a reason that you don't want to just think of these unilaterally. You might decide that at Plymouth, at the retail corridors, you envision that those might be appropriate for a different responsiveness to the surrounding land use than Miller or Packard or Washaw.
Thank you. Ms. Chen, do you want to add on to that?
Yes, I think that one thing that might help with Commissioner Dish's question regarding TC-1 and the corridors, and also with what we've been hearing in the public comment, is the land use that we are showing on the map is not the exact same as a zoning district, and that the comp plan is really focused on the land use vision. And it certainly will guide the zoning, which will happen later. But the zoning is the legal framework. It is the actual ordinances that regulate the height, the area, the bulk, the uses. That is all something that actually comes later. And I think part of maybe what has been confused is, because we did want to lend some of these land use ideas some concreteness, we brought in some of the zoning elements, like height, to help us paint that picture. But at this, for the comp plan, we are very much focused on land use, which is the vision. So it may not get as detailed as the 35 feet, or 48 feet, or 75 feet, or 100 feet. But those were brought into the conversation to help paint a picture that will eventually, of course, be cataloged and be brought back when the city is ready to actually write the legal zoning code, which will get to that level of detail. So to Commissioner Dish's question about the corridors, it is, and I think to what some of the public had mentioned, like, why are we downzoning the TC-1 districts? We are not, we have not downzoned anything, because we're not zoning anything right now. But because of the way TC-1 works, even if you did zone the corridor, TC-1, as Commissioner Dish mentioned, the dimensional requirements and their adjacency to residential districts would mean that you couldn't actually build the 300-foot building, right? So on the land use map, it will appear as a transition, because that is what is happening in the land use effect. So there is that distinction. It is definitely very wonky, but I think, and I hope that helps a little bit, that it is, there is a distinction, though. So we are showing some land uses that look maybe different from TC-1, but it's not because we're downzoning places. I hope that helps.
I think it does. And to clarify at least my understanding, is that the Unified Development Code, which is the current zoning document by which stipulates those details, is not exactly, that's going to follow the quasi-binding comprehensive plan that we've set forth. So we're still on kind of a land use permitted side, which we should talk about non-resi versus, you know, permitted uses within those zones. But I think that clarification definitely helps, and I see that Commissioner Norton wanted to chime in.
I have some thoughts. I'm still processing, I'm not on the conference of planning subcommittee, so, and I wasn't, I just joined the planning commission not that long ago, so I'm still trying to come up to speed. Just to follow quickly on the comment that was just made, it's definitely true, the plan is a policy document, it's not the law. But if you have a plan that says you can't do, that you shouldn't do this here, you've really made it hard to make the law allow something to happen there. So I get with the transition quarters. What I'm seeing is, what I'm envisioning is residential neighborhoods with, lined along these busier streets with low-rise, three-plex, four-story apartment buildings, kind of transitioning off of that street into the single-family homes behind that. Maybe you don't want to put down height limits to illustrate that, because it leads to the suggestion that you're zoning it and putting in height limits, right? Maybe just describe it as a vision for the kind of housing type, the form that people are interested in. I don't understand the employment district. I think, I think we're harking back to a way that people used to work that doesn't happen anymore. So many people now are working out of their homes remotely, until the federal government tells them they can't, I guess. I don't see how long that goes. But I think a lot of the, a lot of the, so we are one horse town, we're the University of Michigan, but I think there's a lot of spin-off stuff that happens with that. I think a lot of people with climate change and what does the Ann Arbor have to offer are going to want to move here and can find ways to work in small commercial buildings and out of their homes in ways that we don't need to set aside large, no housing, commercial districts and say, no residential here. I think that's an unnecessary thing to do for the kinds of employment activities that are likely to happen in the city, looking forward, not looking backward. So I would get rid of the employment district. Low-rise, to me, means a three- or four-story structure. That seems to be what everybody seems to think it is. I'm not sure with the 35 to 45-foot thing, and I know you're talking about stick build, but when I go to cities that have really nicely done apartment complexes, they're stone-built, and they're three- and four-story, I think they're different construction types that maybe don't need to be constrained the way, if I'm following you, you're thinking they need to be constrained?
Oh, no. And generally, those are actually going to have, it's going to have actually wood frame structure with kind of a stucco or a brick facade. But generally, wood frame construction is the kind of the cheapest construction type, considered like 150, 170. considered like $150, $170 a square foot. And so a brick just gets into a slightly more expensive bill, but ultimately, but you're, you're right. I mean, three to four stories, that's about 36 to 48 feet. That's, that's low-rise. I think we're on the same page.
I think that's what people are thinking. And I think that fits with this kind of vision of the corridor, the transition corridors. I get that. I'm a little bit baffled by the...
Can I clear, can I clarify though? You talked about it fits for the corridors, but I just want to be clear, we're talking about, you're talking about the majority of the city. You're saying that four stories is appropriate to transition to these corridors that might be taller. Is that...
No, I'm kind of bouncing off of the transition corridors.
Okay.
And what, and the fact that this is presenting a vision of what the city might look like over time as it builds out.
Okay.
So I, I don't know, maybe the whole, a lot of these districts will turn into that, but it seems to me that if the whole idea is to really encourage transit-oriented development where people can live, walk out of their house, that transition happening along those busier corridors that presumably will have dedicated bus lanes and quick transit are the likely place that's going to happen first. I'm rambling a little bit too. I'm kind of hitting off points. I wanted to point out ironically, historically, when planners and zoning officials talked about the highest and best use, they were usually talking about commercial and industrial activities because that's where you got the most money and we were protecting the single-family home from the highest and best economic uses. How bad is our housing crisis that now the highest and best use is housing? Right? I mean, that's just completely inverting the historical pattern of what we're needing. So I think there's a role for, I don't know that we want a zone specifically to maximize private property owners' return on their investments because there are larger community things we need to worry about and not focus on that, but we should be mindful of it. I'm a little bit confused by the retail designations. To my mind, the biggest problem that we face in Ann Arbor is so much of the city is built out in a way that it's going to take a long time for people to accept. The only way we're going to build out is to build densely in the places where you can, which is the retail quarters with the hunk in big parking lots that are sitting empty right now, that could be totally redeveloped with higher density housing and mixed use. Why are we constraining them to shopping mall-like settings, which I, I think is what this is envisioning? And then the other problem is the single-family neighborhoods where there are folks living there who just are going to fiercely resist any kind of increasing density until maybe they realize it's actually a high-end piece coming in that's going to raise their property values. Oh my gosh, I don't think we could afford to buy the house we're living in now because of the inflating prices. That's not sustainable. And it'll be to the detriment of all of us if that trend keeps going. So, so I guess I'm pushing back on picking out parts of this, of the plan, of the city and saying, we're not going to allow housing there. That doesn't make sense to me. I think mixed-use housing, trying to think through, I also wanted to ask, I know there was some talk about allowing some kind of industrial uses that were smelly or something. I don't remember what the term was. But what, have people been trying to come to Ann Arbor to build those things and can't?
No.
No, but we have people complain about their neighbors' lights. So I, I just want to, I just want to be clear, when we're talking about messy uses, the notion of a sustainable circular economy where you can demo your garage and there's a place to sort your building materials and the building, it's, we could totally do that in, we could decide to do that in the R1. I would just tell you that my experience for both a planning, zoning and enforcement experience set is people have their limits and they have their frustrations with conflicting land uses. And so when we're talking about, I think we've, I don't, I want to be clear, no, we're not getting a new transmission plant. But there are uses that are more likely to be nuisance-laden, even if they're meeting our nuisance ordinances, that'll be conflicting with residential land uses.
Yeah. I'm still processing. Maybe you see somebody else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's go to Commissioner Hammerschmidt next. Yeah, 100, we'll come back in.
Thank you. I'll just say that I knew when I looked at the presentation preparing for this meeting and all of the questions in here, it's just going to be, there's going to be a lot of like bouncing around. I'm going to try not to bounce too much. So I'm going to start with the question you actually asked Commissioner Lee about low-rise residential. I'm absolutely in favor of the low-rise residential land use replacing the R1 and the R2 single-family zones. I know this gets into zoning, but like, I would say let's push the height limit. I do have a question about what does limited commercial mean or entail within that proposed land use?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
Every corner?
Every corner, okay. No, I mean...
Honestly, the intention for is the plan that just allows commercial uses in the low-density residential.
Mm-hmm.
I think just restricting, restricting until road classifications is one potential, but that's going to be greatly limiting. I think trying to allow a first-in, but restrict it after is dangerous. So I think it would likely have to be something about corner lots. Like a lot of, a lot of communities now, say like in single-family, you can do two plexes on corners. It might be something similar to that.
But the idea would be to allow some commercial within these...
Allow commercial uses, permitted uses.
That's great. On Green Road right now, there's a church for sale and some of my neighbors had a discussion about like, this would be great, it's like a coffee shop, but are we allowed to do, like, can we do commercial? And I was like, I think in the new comp plan. So I didn't lie. Okay, great. I like that. I like that aspect. And I think a lot of people would too, and it would avoid 40-minute walks to coffee shops. I do have some concern, although I don't know how to get around this, with like the idea of using units, because I think we get, and this was an example with the city place, like we get these massive, like the six-bedroom units that I think target students more than they might target non-students. They could become like out of reach for families and individuals looking for housing. So putting, you know, a four-unit, but actually 24-bedroom like building in a low-rise residential area, like depending on this, how it's like formed and scaled, like could feel like crazy and that's like a lot of people. I don't know how you get, that's just like, I mean, that's a concern I continue to have when we build like six-bedroom apartments, but I don't know that we can get around that, but that was a question about in here somewhere. I'm going to agree with, I know it was Commissioner White, I think also Commissioner Wetherby, on the transect diagram you showed, I don't, I think like all of those things can fit into like the low-rise residential. I don't think we need to split a line down the middle. Like I can, I can vision all of them in that zone or land use. So generally, I like where this is going for low-rise residential. Yay. I have a couple of questions. You started off the presentation, and I'm sorry that I missed the last steering committee meeting and the last committee meeting, but you said that things emerged differently in those meetings than some of the public comment that you've been hearing and some, some things like how you've been thinking about the plan. Can you, can you summarize?
Yeah. From the outset, City Council directed adding residential density across the city explicitly in single-family districts. And my experience, and when we started talking to the public about that, density is a broad term that means very different things to people. And some people, at the end of the day, 70% of the people said, yeah, I want more density in my neighborhood. But a lot of that was contextualized with, we are going to provide four units by right in areas now that only allow single-family. And part of that was that at the project teams trying to navigate the, how people process that word. Some people hear that and it's, it's great. Some people hear that word and they fear it. When you say, well, what if it's an accessory dwelling unit or what if it's a duplex? Some people fear that and some people love it. When you say, what if it's a six-story building next to your home? Some people love that, some people fear that. And so we specifically talked about 35 feet, four units with the public for much of this last year as a way of, and again, mea culpa, as a way of trying to illustrate something, but it, it has conflated a land use policy. But when laid in the process at both the steering committee and the planning commission subcommittee, the conversation came up and it was very, is a quick, a quick evolution of that, that we should raise the height limit to 48 feet as Commissioner Lee indicated and there should be no restriction on the number of units. And so I want to validate with all of you, the planning mission, your plan, we're ready to draft what you're looking for. The purpose of this is, I heard somebody say, I absolutely want those things, but I don't want lockwood popped in a neighborhood. Those are, those are contrary. So, so, and we can, we can do that. We can say, we want unlimited units, we don't care about height, or we do care about height, but we want some other form-based scale that's not a restriction on the number of units in order to do that. That's fine too. But I wanted to acknowledge that that's a different, that's a, going in a different direction to a lot of property owners' conversations with us and the consultant team over the last year. We can do that, but that happening, deviating from our engagement and without, I wanted to frankly replicate that conversation with the entirety of the planning commission. We're going to be, as I said, doing the same thing with the city council, just to make sure that everybody is aware of that. And we're going to take that direction. And so, but that's the direction we're looking for is, don't care about units, don't care about height, that's fine. We'd like to move forward. I just want to acknowledge that that's distinct from some of the conversations and I think that would result, I would speculate that that's going to result in a different outcome of 73% of the people saying they want more density in their neighborhoods. I don't know what that number is, but I think it would be distinct.
Okay. Thank you. That is helpful. And I can't respond to that yet because I have a lot going on in my head. I guess my second question that sort of leads me into some of these like mixed-use zoning or mixed-use, mixed-use uses in my comments on that. So I fully acknowledge that this land use plan on the map, in the presentation is 100% an improvement over what we currently have, but there was an iteration for a brief moment that had even fewer land uses. What happened? What happened to that one?
We're kind of validating that with you now. We, me and the consultant team see that some of those hubs can perform different services and evolve in different ways in our community. If you disagree with that, you're going to see those consolidated into fewer.
Okay. I disagree with that. I think, and the one that I'm really just going to like kind of glom onto is the innovation district. And I think I have a lot of problems with it for two main reasons. One, I live in that area, so like personally, so I'll speak for my part of the second ward and things that I've heard in my neighborhood WhatsApp group. But the second is, I feel like all it's doing is catering to the university. And I, I know the university is a huge presence, but like I disagree that we're a one-horse town. I have nothing to do with the university. I mean, I'm alumni, but my husband has nothing to do with the university. Like we don't work, we don't work for the university. A lot of our neighbors don't work for the university. Like we're in Ann Arbor for different reasons and it's really frustrating to see the university continuing to just like buy up property or let property sit vacant. So the idea that we would allocate space for these hypothetical startups when they've got tons of land just sitting empty in that same area, I don't like it. I just, like, I think like more housing in that area would benefit it a lot more than holding space for something that we think might happen in the future. And I guess I could make similar comments for the other areas. I just, I don't see a need to distinguish them so much from each other at this point. I mean, when we, this goes back to zoning, but when we zoned these corridors TC1, I think, you know, we zoned them all TC1, we didn't zone one of them TC2 or TC3 because we thought that they had very similar feeling. Like yes, there is an arbor land and there is a, whatever that one is over on Maple, something Village, maybe Village. But in general, we wanted the same feeling along those corridors and we wanted housing and we wanted retail. And I feel like this is getting away from that a little bit by backing off on the housing that I think would make these a lot more vibrant zones, areas of the city, particularly for people that don't live here and that do live adjacent to them. So I think I would like to go back to seeing more consistency among those and allowing more housing within those zones. I keep calling them zones, but they're not really zones. Okay, I'm going to stop right now.
Okay. We're going to go to Commissioner Abrams.
Thank you. I think I'll try to be brief. I mostly just want to underscore that I agree with many of the public comments and all of the commissioner comments that are in support of lifting any restriction on housing anywhere in the land use plan. And I think it's interesting what you're saying about public concessions of density, Brett, because I think it feels to me like the very definition of exclusion, which is to say that those people are people who live here, you even referred to them as property owners. And they are, you know, I understand that for many of us, including me, my individual wealth sits in the property value of my home. And so there's a conflict of interest between my family's wealth, my generational wealth, Donnell's trust for his children, and things that may threaten the value of my home. And yet, it is the definition of exclusion to say that we're going to establish policy and regulation and law that makes it difficult or impossible for other people to come and live in this community. So I don't support that. I think density, actually, we can just talk about a definition of density, which is like there are more people per square, whatever area you want to measure than there are now. That's increased density. You can do it by adding units, you can do it by adding mass. I mean, we can do it in a whole lot of ways. And I think, yeah, an ADU does increase density, but that's obviously not the scale at which we need to be, we need to be thinking. So I agree with including all of the kinds of missing little housing that are in this diagram, which if we take your line where it is, would exclude things like townhomes, which I think we already probably have pretty broad buy-in in this community to allow townhomes in residential districts. And since the, maybe I'm wrong about this, but since the land use plan doesn't, or the comprehensive plan does, is not a zoning plan, we don't actually have to debate the height limit right now, right? Can't we just say low, or maybe, help me, maybe this is a question for you, Stacy, like, does the plan have to say what we think low-rise residential is? Or can we, can we say low-rise residential, leave it at that? And when we go to write the ordinance, then we're talking about whether that's a 48-foot restriction or a 35-foot restriction? So that would be a question, maybe to bookmark. But to my mind, it feels like there's a kind of consensus that low-rise, we know it when we see it, and maybe that's good enough for the, for the comprehensive plan. And then I just wanted to chime in and say that I, I don't think regulating by unit count works because we just end up with these big six-bedroom units. But I think we do need to regulate, you were kind of throwing unit count and height limit in the same bucket, Brett, and I would say I think we do want to talk about a height limit or FAR, which I'm happy to explain to you again, Dan, but, which I think can be also effective. You know, but just the idea is like, FAR would allow you to think about open space in a way that a height limit wouldn't, but we could combine a height limit with other things and blah, blah, blah. But all of that feels like it's in the weeds for the comprehensive plan and that's like, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. So just backing up, I just want to say more housing, as much housing as possible everywhere. And I agree with Commissioner Hammerschmidt about, very skeptical of an innovation zone. And if there is really a need, I don't see it, but if there was a need for an employment zone, it doesn't have to say non-residential, it could also just be some way of encouraging employment there that doesn't prohibit residential. Thanks.
Commissioner Norton, and then I'd like to add actually a comment.
Yeah, just a few points and I'll finish off. I think the thing that people fear the most is change. And no matter what you propose, they're going to oppose it first because it's different than what they're used to. And I think that's a lot of the resistance from the folks in the neighborhoods. And I totally get, I'm a homeowner in Ann Arbor and I, change is scary, but I've also seen new projects come in that my neighbors were vociferously against and they've been built and now nobody, it's like, fine. It's not the problem that everybody envisioned it was going to be. And so I'm a little bit wary of not wanting to stump on toes because people are going to resist it because it's different and we can't, you know, can't allow that to happen. So maybe, and I know you said form-based codes are really hard to administer and they're very problematic, but I think folks are way more worried about the form of the structure that's going in than they are about most other things. that's going in than they are about most other things. They want to know what it's, what's it going to look like? Does it fit in with the character of the place? They're not maybe so worried about the number of units. I mean, maybe we need to worry about, can we service them with the infrastructure we have? But it's much more their concern about what's the form going to look like and does it fit with the neighborhood? And there's a whole lot we could be evolving to increase the density through nicely-built and constructed homes that are well-designed, and I know I've had conversations with folks about how it is to do design review, and that's a difficult history there, but maybe let's focus on that instead of setting aside no residential employment districts and no residential innovation districts. Maybe we should revisit our nuisance laws. If, if the problems are, the things that are happening are creating real nuisances, maybe we need to tie what we're doing with planning and zoning to revisiting the nuisance rules, so that they are all of a piece. And then the last point I'll make is, I'm not surprised at all that nothing's happened in the TC1 districts in three years, because it's a pretty substantial change to what's there, and it's going to take folks a while, developers, I reckon, to kind of contemplate, what could we do now, and how would we get the current stuff that's there, the, out of the leases? I know it's a sticky, long, involved process, but the plan ought to be the really visionary, where do we really want to go? And let's think boldly, and I'll come back to the point I want to make again. We should be thinking seriously about, about the Barwood, the arbor land, the Maple Village, the Plymouth, those are prime places to create new downtowns, that bring in the density, that then serve the retail that would be there, instead of trying to maintain a mall that serves a regional shopping market, which requires big parking lots. That's where a lot of the new intense development should be going around those places. Let's figure out how to create a vision through the plan for those things, and then follow up with the zoning code. Instead of setting them aside, and we've already locked ourselves into so much trouble with the plan and zoning code we have in place, let's not keep locking ourselves into trouble, and try, let's try and move beyond that. Wow, I was a little stumped there.
Yeah, no.
Stump speech going.
No, no, that was, that was great. And I will follow that up with, I do agree, and if I was, if I were to try to summarize kind of what I've heard to, from both the public commentators as well as the commission, I think largely the employment non-residential zone, we should not have. Let's get rid of that restriction. I think that's clearly something. And then I think there's, and I want to create some level of context. Generally, about average per square foot for new resi is about $3.50-ish a square foot. So, that's on a per-month basis, so if you annualize it, it's about $42 a square foot. So somewhere between $36 and $42 a square foot. Office, right now downtown, Class A is probably low 30s, Class B is probably low 20s. It all depends on incentives, et cetera. But I think that's that actually reverse dynamic of where residential, again, sub, it's around 2% vacancy rates, and you know, I think office is actually right about, that sounds about right, 15, there's some shadow space, so there are spaces that are leased, but no one's actually utilizing them, and that can be actually problematic for restaurants and things like that in the downtown area. So, I think that there is definitely, I think some of the fear might be, if we allow, like, maybe all that gets built is resi, and then we don't actually have an economic base, but at the same, and I think, I think that's also a concern to have, you know, consider, because we are an institutionally reliant, anchor institutional reliant city, right? We are, I think, the fourth most densely concentrated with one institution, right? Next, like New Haven, Connecticut, et cetera. So I think, you know, economic diversification is something that we definitely talked about, but I absolutely agree with that the most salient place that we can make impacts are going to be those large infill parking lots, right? And I think the conflict that exists with retail, and I don't know where we got into, and I think this is where the retail-specific hub came from. TC1 doesn't play well with big existing retailers, and that's because the current TC1 requires like 70% glazing, has frontage kind of like requirements that, it's almost quasi-form-based in a certain respect. And having done a few of these big-box, junior-box retailers, like Whole Foods or Best Buy, they have very specific frontage requests. Like, when they come in, and they're like, "This is what I need," right? And so, instead of saying like, "No resi," or "It's retail-specific," it's, "We should allow the flexibility." If, if they truly are able to command $45 a square foot, then it should be economically stimulating. Instead of prohibiting resi, we should try to figure out why there are conflicts with, why Brixmor would be against TC1, right? They wrote a really good memo to us. But I do think that we can be more effective at delivering the housing units we need, if we take a look at those specific TC1 corridors, et cetera. Now, TC1, is it perfect? I mean, we've been going through TC1, it has definitely its challenges, but I think that we need to be more permissive rather than restrictive. That, so, so I think to kind of recap what I've been hearing, as far as, again, non-resi zones on employment, not necessary. The mixed use, I think I heard people like, "Why not just TC1?", but I think I actually heard some pretty good arguments for why, hey, based on the proximity and adjacency to resi, this is just a land use categorization, it's not necessarily downzoning, so I'm actually okay with that concept. And then with retail hubs, I think this is actually where we can create the most amount of excitement in terms of actually impacting the number of units. Again, a healthy, healthy environment's going to be about 5% to 7% vacancy rate. That will actually start to make an impact on rental rates. Three, by the way, $3.50 a square foot, that means that your 1,000-square-foot apartment is $3,500 a month. That, that is, that's just too high. So, I think we need meaningful unit delivery, and that can happen on these corridors. So, largely, I think the idea should be, let's try to be more flexible with retail hubs. Understand the issues that they have with respect to leasehold restrictions, which is frontage requirements. They have compressible ratios for how tight your, like, parking lots have to be. They have parking lot requirements, right? They have to have, you know, one space for every 300 square feet, et cetera. So, or I'm sorry, it's going to be about four, four per 1,000 square feet. So, I think retail hubs, you want to be a little bit more flexible, but also permit resi. And then with respect to innovation hub, I think that is, again, we do want to encourage economic diversification, that can be challenging. That is a real balancing act to do, but prohibiting and creating more restrictive covenants with respect to those seems to be something that people do not want to see largely. Last item, I want to just say, I don't know that 55 or 48, whatever height, is, I don't know what's appropriate or correct. I have said that from the standpoint of, I think what makes sense to me would be removing conflicts between building code, the state building code, and our zoning code, to the extent that it is practical. And so, it's not to say that normatively, I believe in a specific height for a specific neighborhood, that that is certainly not the case. I'm just trying to proffer the logic that we should try to reduce conflicts in multiple places that developers have to look at and say, "Hey, oh geez, well, the definition for non-sprinkled height is here, but the zoning is saying this, but there are conflicts, and is it to the height of HVAC, is it to the parapet, et cetera?" So I just want to help to try to unify some of the definitions. So, hopefully that covered the vast majority of kind of questions that you had, and I will also provide some room. We'll go to Commissioner Weitz, and then Councilmember Dish. Thanks.
I just wanted to follow up with Commissioner Hammerschmidt's comment. It was the July 17th presentation of the Subcommittee where we got the three zones. So, we went from 34 to 3, and now we're somewhere around 13. Can we get back to 4? Because I feel like that, that felt really good. And I think our big issue in that meeting, at least it was from me, is that we were calling, what we're now calling low-rise residential, neighborhood residential, and I had a big objection to that, because it means, when we think about housing, we are always thinking about a single housing type. And as someone who grew up in multiple housing types, I don't think it's appropriate for us to say that just because someone lives in a multi-unit development, that that's not a neighborhood. And I want to push in on this point, because this is, what we're doing is about real people. Avalon, which is my neighbor now, on Platt Road with Veridian, that project is the project that got me into advocacy for affordable housing. That first meeting was at the county farm park in 2014. I took myself and my five or so interns, and I stayed connected to that project all the way until the county commissioners decided to go ahead and sell it. These are my neighbors. We just hosted Avalon in our church for their annual holiday party, so that all their residents, for the very first time, could come to a single place and all be together to sort of celebrate what Avalon is doing in our community. And I think it, it's important for us to recognize that when Avalon announced the availability of 20 units of affordable housing, they received over 7,000 applications. That means 6,980 people are immediately looking for housing. So whatever this plan does, I hope its primacy is, how do we answer those individuals as a community? These are folks who are already here, who want to live here, and are looking for places to live. I'll pause, and then I just have one final comment, but Ms. Bennett wanted to say something.
I wanted to discuss the employment zone and residential, just to put a few things in perspective. The employment zone, as it is now in South Industrial, does not allow housing. So we have not taken any housing away. Secondly, it only constitutes about 2% of all land use, so 98% of land in the city permits housing. So, with these projections that we've showed you as well, we would be permitting up to 97,000 more units, which is much more than could probably ever be built. So I just, I am someone who wants to buy a home in Ann Arbor. I am very pro-housing. I think this plan is very pro-housing. I just want that to be a part of the record, because I don't want it to look as if this employment zone is the answer to solving this, right? If we allow zoning, or if we allow housing in every single square inch of this city, we might still not solve this housing crisis. Housing might still be quite expensive for a lot of people. So I would just like that to not be too misleading here, that we are restricting housing and therefore it's too expensive. It's already very expensive, and if we continue to allow it, it's going to be expensive. Our hope is that we can build enough supply so that we reduce the rate at which it goes up. That's sort of our best-case scenario. We're not going to be able to drop the cost of housing significantly in the next couple years. So, I will leave with that.
Thank you.
All right, I have the second point.
Okay, yep.
So, yeah, my second point is, for this plan, the thing that I am hoping we don't do is create a bunch of non-conforming structures. So, as I was looking at where some of these additional zones are going in, they're putting, they're going to create non-conformities, like five corners. I think the developments on Church and Forest would become non-conforming. And so, wanting to make sure that however we sort of label whatever we're not calling TC1, that we don't create a case where we know we want to put that kind of housing in a place that is adjacent to the university, that would be easy for that housing to go, that we don't sort of restrict it because of the land use. And we know that developers start with the comprehensive plan when they come and present. The first thing they say out of their mind, their mouths is, "This development fits the comprehensive plan," and it goes dot, 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 dot. So I just wanted to make sure that the, that got into the record, as well as you all are taking feedback from us.
Cool. Thank you. Councilmember Dish.
I just wanted to underscore that I think the discussion of low-rise housing at the table tonight was tending toward asking for a meaningful increase over the current 30. And so, if 35 was discussed in the outreach, that probably doesn't feel like a meaningful increase, because it's a small percentage over. And, and there has been, I'm, I'm not qualified to settle this dispute, but regulating number of units does not seem good to me, because I worry that we will get high-bedroom count units when single, you know, when 12 efficiency apartments would be more useful probably on the market than four six-bedroom apartments. So, so I, and if we regulate by number of units in these, in this low-rise, in what we're trying to get, in what are currently our, our one and two zones, I just worry that we're going to get things that, that don't add housing diversity for us, because we're getting a lot of rentals with six-bedroom units, and so that's not diversity. So, but again, price point is, I don't think we can affect that with the zoning. So, and I'm really glad of Ms. Bennett, your, Planner Bennett, your last comment about the employment zone at South Industrial isn't taking housing away. It's not taking the possibility of housing away. And as I said earlier, I think it may be offering us something that can be useful. What I have appreciated about the comments tonight is not necessar, I mean, in my view, I'm not sure that the employment zone should be off the table, because I know there are other departments of the city that are looking to do things and they can't find land to do it. I know how long it took us to find a place for the election center. I know that the constraints of the things that we were looking for meant that it looked like we might have to go out to the townships. So I just don't think that our discussion here is reflecting all the considerations that need to be brought to bear on that issue. And maybe employment zone is, is not the best name to capture what's trying to be done? I don't know. I don't really care, but I think that there's complexity there. But what I do think that this discussion is brought up is, is South Industrial a place that lends itself to the kind of walkability and mixed use that we're looking for? And what we've seen with Beekman is what we hope would happen when we permit density, is that we've gotten commercial that wasn't there, and the commercial appears to be thriving. And what we have in South Industrial is commercial that's thriving, because people can either drive, or they do heroically long walks in the polar vortex to get there. And it might be, you know, a place where we would like to have more residential, but that, but I'm not, I don't think that whole area is that. I think it's part of what is the employment zone there. I don't think that the parts that south of 94 is that. And I am not going to say that there isn't, there aren't other parts of the city that I might not want us to keep a place for a big, a large structure where you can count ballots. I mean, I know we already have it, but I'm just giving an example. It's not the only thing that we're going to talk about needing. We're talking about needing a place we can wash the returnable containers when that project scales up. I mean, there's stuff the city's doing, and so I just don't want it off the table, because I, I don't think, you know, yeah, I'm sorry, I just, that's all I, I mean, I can't, there's nothing we can, we don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add to that, because I do think that while, like, housing is salient, it's extremely expensive, right? And so it, but there is definitely a balancing act in the long scheme of things on the 50, 100-year horizon, that has to happen from the standpoint of, for example, KLA Center of Excellence, or whether it is Sartorius, right? These massive job drivers are important for the future economic viability. I mean, we have 94,000-ish jobs, we have 54-ish thousand housing units. Clearly, there's an imbalance that exists currently. In the long scale of things, what makes Ann Arbor, why it's driving rent so high, is because it is a concentration of talent, because there is a lot of patents, a lot of research funding that is being driven largely here. And so, to create space for that, I think has some, I think that's a delicate balancing act. From a land use standpoint, the question is, should it be restrictive, right? And should we And should we say it's designated specifically for this? Or should we let the, the market kind of shake itself out? And the concern would be that, would these buildings be built specifically with resi in mind? That makes it too difficult to convert if the market shifts in favor of a different type of commerce. And so I want to give, I do want to highlight the importance of economic diversification. I certainly don't, I mean, and it may sound like it's a contrast with prior comments, but it, because it is a balancing act, and that we can't necessarily take exactly what is extremely salient to us at this point in time, and say that that will forever be the case, as this is a guiding document for, for the next, you know, 50-ish years. So, but that being said, I think more flexibility is better. So again, I do want to give credence to what you're saying. With that, we are at 9:50 right now. I want, yes, Mr. Leonard, no, I'll probably take two comments additional.
Well, what I'd like to do is, if, if you're, I'd like to sort of reflect back what I'm hearing and the steps that I intend to take.
Yes.
With this information, if you're ready for it. And I just want to acknowledge that I've heard conflicting feedback as we've gone around the table. I have not asked for a vote, but I'm going to do my best to interpret that and tell you the direction that I want to go in. Before I do, I just want, there was a lot of conversations about you, your consultants are doing this, or your consultants are doing that. I want to be clear, our consultants are bringing the expertise that you are wrestling with at this very table. That's why we're hiring them to bring this to the table. And so I want to be clear when there's comments made that I cannot believe that they have done this, or this is somehow a perceived failure that they did that. This is, these are the exact same issues that brought us to this table, that conversation that you just had, and I am proud that we were able to bring these questions to you, because I think it makes your ultimate plan more thought out and balanced. But this is what I am hearing as takeaways and direction for us to work on this plan. That low-rise residential should replace our 1 and our 2, and that likely is a development pattern that allows an unlimited amount of units, likely in a four-story-ish scale, and you are interested in regulating that by some mechanism, not by number of units, but rather by form. When we're talking about what goes into that, it be as broad and expansive as possible. There was conversation about the appropriateness of Lockwood to be imposed in that. I am interpreting your, the balance of your conversation as, that's fine. If Lockwood goes into a neighborhood, that's fine, as long as it is meeting the, whatever those form-based requirements, those four height, that is fine. So we are not going to be trying to somehow arbitrarily scale down the size of buildings beyond some large parameters to provide the most flexibility. That, you ideally would like a plan that seeks to regulate that scale by something other than the number of units, as I said. As it relates to the mixed-use areas and hubs and corridors, I am hearing, and let me throw the employment zone in it, there's, I'm hearing, you don't want 98% of the city plan for residential, you want 100% of the city plan for residential. You don't want to see any restrictions. So we will really take a hard look at our mixed-use hubs. I think that there's likely going to be a consolidation of those, where the, we will probably look at a very similar language for those. There was some conversation about flexibility of retail, because of some of the unique aspects. That's exactly where we are coming from, but I didn't hear that resonated with a lot of other commissioners. So I fully anticipate that going into the same, more unified approach that might seek the same character recommendations as the other mixed-use hubs and the downtown district. So those are the take, those are the, those are the marching orders that I am hearing for us to start working on as far as a plan. I thought votes on all those things would have been hard. I understand that within that, there are some perspectives, like Commissioner Dish, you indicated that I think you're still uneasy with, but I'm doing my best to try to read the majority of what I'm hearing and deliver you a document that is, in fact, you are not the co-author of, you are the author of. So, did I mischaracterize any of that?
Oh, Commissioner Adams.
I mentioned Lockwood earlier as something that I don't think we would probably want plopped in the middle of an R1 or an R2.
And again, I didn't hear that replicated.
No, no, no. And I just wanted to clarify, that wasn't to say specifically Lockwood, right? It was to use an example of, and I'm not a, I'm not operating in a political capacity, but the plan at the end of the day is a political document, approved through a political process, and there is an outer limit on what people will accept. And that, that has to be, you know, obviously accounted for. And that's the only reason I brought it up, and I just wanted to clarify.
100%, but that's what also what I'm trying to clarify. I, I need your help to help guide, because you're delivering that, you're threading that needle. Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Oden.
Well, I, I would say, yes, those are pretty good marching orders to start with, but I would say we're probably going to revisit all of this. I mean, it's really hard to respond to things unless we have something in front of us.
Well, you knew it, but we, we want, these are fundamental questions that we wanted so that we can start working on framing and presenting that back to you and the community.
So I think this has been a useful exercise, and I appreciate the feedback we're getting about the reasoning behind it, and we're all grappling, these are, if these were easy problems, we wouldn't be having these difficult conversations. So I guess my sense is proceed, and kind of what, what you heard is a good starting point, and then, once we have something more tangible in front of us, we'll be able to noodle on it more and respond more fully. Is that a?
Talking about, yeah.
Yeah. Is that, is that all that? I don't mean to speak for the whole commission, but that's my sense of.
No, I think that's, I think that's accurate, that this will be an iterative process. There aren't clear-cut defined answers. There are different viewpoints, different perspectives that we have to continue to consider, but to, I think what you've summarized so far has been clear with respect to our discussion tonight.
Good luck, Stacy.
Oh, and Commissioner Abrams.
Just two things. One, I just wanted to say that I think maybe to Planner Bennett's comments, those were helpful, and maybe what I am thinking is that the extreme reaction, or what feels like maybe, an extreme reaction to this idea of this 2%, and not even prohibiting housing, but even limiting housing in certain zones, it's just evidence of the extreme need, you know, and the depth of the crisis, so that like this, what may appear to be, you know, a minor thing, because it's 2%, I think actually has a big impact. So it just, for me, kind of underscores the need that we have. But the other thing is, maybe more to this discussion, Mr. Leonard, can you say again what you were saying about flexibility in retail? I'm not sure I followed what you were summarizing there.
Yeah. We were, one of the, one of the changes that complicated the future land use map was designating the retail centers near interchanges distinctly from other corridors, recognizing that they're, from an economic perspective, they have a pretty unique regional role. They are frankly more auto-centric. And some of the other factors around those, we, I, and the team were questioning whether or not applying the same aspirational form-based standards that currently apply to them are going to be a barrier from adding residential to parking lots and retail centers, given the factors. I was commenting, I was hearing Commissioner Lee talk about echoing some of those concerns, that some, there are some specific aspects and factors about retail centers that might make it really challenging to just meet our form-based requirements now that we have, like, for example, our current TC1 with visibility into the street and limited surface parking ratios. And so that was, the question was posed, because I wanted to, I wanted to pose the question really directly, do we want to provide more flexibility, that is, reduce expectations to provide more avenues there? And generally, what I am hearing is, no, we do not.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, yeah.
I think I missed that point, and I apologize for this, but I, maybe what's not clear to me is what flexibility means. So is it like, less transparent, less requirements about transparency, or retail on the corner, or that kind of thing?
Some of the case studies that are included in the presentation might not meet, they might include single-story buildings. Those are not permitted under our current zoning framework. Some of them might have been an adaptation of an existing site, and when taken in total, aren't going to meet our maximum parking requirements, as we currently have designated for those properties. So those are examples of potential evolutions of those, that our current regulatory framework might be a barrier. And so the question was, would we like to provide more flexibility? I, I mean that as lower standards of physical development in order to encourage more activity at those quicker. And the consensus that I heard from the majority of commissioners is, no, we're not interested in that.
Okay, and then one related question to that, is the TC1 project at State and Eisenhower still in the pipeline?
It's still under review.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Wetherby, final comment.
Yeah, I just had one point of, that this was something that I discovered the last time we talked about this, is, we talk a lot about, so this is relative to like the employment non-residential. When we talk, and Sartorius comes up a lot, and I just wanted to put a data point out, Sartorius has 16 acres, and they expect in 2016 to have 300 employees. And I just wanted to point out that the university and hospitals have 53,831 employees. So we're talking, even a big employment hub takes up 16 acres of buildable space for 300 employees, and that we may not be a one-horse town, but we're not a Sartorius town. And that, that if we're going to say no residential on large swaths for a few hundred employees, that, that may not be a good balance.
To be clear, we're not saying, we weren't proposing no residential on large swaths. We were proposing no residential.
On 2%.
2% of the city's land area.
And I think, yeah, and I think the point on proportionality is important, that we may be able to deliver a lot of housing in very small, you know, portions, like, for example, Arbor South, and 1,000 units on 10 acres, I think. And so I think that's, that's important to keep in mind. Do you think you have enough feedback from us at this point?
I do. I'm hoping to get a wink or a nod from the consultant team.
Yeah. Good luck.
There's no link in and none.
Yeah.
I'll take a smile. Yes. And to be clear, I will be packaging your feedback with our conversation with the city council, so that will likely be more of a reporting out of what direction we've gotten from you, and hopefully y'all on the same page.
Okay, great. And for what it's worth, thank you to all of you that spoke today. This was probably the biggest turnout we've had, so we really appreciate that civic engagement. So, really appreciate y'all. Okay, with that, we are actually moving on to next business, which is stormwater comprehensive plan overview. We are looking to appoint a planning commission representative to the comprehensive stormwater management plan advisory group. Mr. Leonard?
You, in January, received an overview of this planning effort. It's not disconnected from our previous conversation. The city has a lot of infrastructure analysis going on that are going to be another thing that we're going to have to solve for when we're talking about growth of the city. But in this case, we're working on a stormwater, they would like to put together a stormwater advisory group, the SWAG. And when I think of SWAG, of course, we think of Commissioner Norton.
Let's go.
Who indicated an interest in serving on that. And so I would like the commission, per your bylaws, to give him the official nod to represent the planning commission in that group.
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner White.
White.
I am so sorry.
It's okay.
Very long day. And seconded by Commissioner Hammerschmidt. All those in favor, voice call, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. SWAG. Let's go. Okay, moving on to public comment. This is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We'll first hear from those present, and then remote participants. To smoke remotely, please press star nine if by phone, or use the raise hand feature on Zoom. You will hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please mute background noises and speak clearly. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Do we have any, Mr. Chambers, Dr. Chambers?
Yes, okay.
So, thank you very much for the conversation, and I really appreciated what I heard.
Sorry if I came across a little rough and gruff at the beginning, I just wouldn't have pushed you a little bit. But Ann Arbor from 1940 grew 250% by 1980. It's been essentially flat from 1980 to 2020. So the comprehensive plan could lead to more growth. I've, working with a land trust group in town here, some of you hear me rattle on about it now and then, we think that housing, no matter how it's going to develop going forward, is still going to be expensive, as you said here. Right now, middle-income families cannot afford new builds. Per the data I gave you earlier, they cannot afford median listings. Ann Arbor is not affordable to middle-income, let alone low-income households. The density that you're pushing for along corridors has the added benefit of, if we can build out our transit, we can get people out of cars. So while we may not be able to reduce their cost of housing, we can reduce their cost of living. I just want that to sink in a little bit, because that's why we're building density, is to get people out of cars, why we're asking for walkable streets and everything. So my apologies if I'm preaching to the choir here, I'm seeing a lot of heads nod, or even if you groans. By the way, TC1 hasn't had any build-outs because of high interest rates. If you talk to Jeff Hotman and why he's took an extra year to submit his plans and things, I just like, I didn't know where the markets were going. I couldn't come forward right away, you know? I'm sure you talked to him, right, maybe? So, you know, but please don't say that TC1 wasn't acceptable or hasn't worked, because nothing's been built. I think that's unfair, it's not acknowledging our economic time. So I'd ask just not to, not to, people say that again, especially on the planning commission, or to the planning commission. The innovation districts, U of M grew by 35,000 employees and students over the past 20 years. If you've looked at their master plan, they have more property on the east side of 23 than they have on the west side of 23. I'm letting that sink in. We don't need an innovation district in the northeast corner. The U of M is coming in with KLA and other tenants, they're following the Stanford model of the land trust, because all of those corporate entities at Stanford Park are paying Stanford for the use of the land, and they're reaping billions into their trust funds, into their trust for it. That's their economic model. The U of M is moving in that direction as well. I guess that's my time. So, by the way, I've been working with another faculty group in town, and we're pitching the U of M to build out employee housing to 5,000 to 10,000 units per area, the old Northwood 3 complex. We've got a set of student teams, and they're proposing 10,000 units of employee housing, non-student housing. So U of M is slowly stepping up to the role, will be presenting to the regents as well. It's not just up to the CFO, but we've been meeting with them too. So we've got to have housing everywhere across the city, and the U is going to continue to grow. They're likely to increase their employment again by that same number, and the student count by that same number, and we're going to be right back where we are, even if we build out more housing. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time?
Thanks for sticking with us. It's been a long night. I want to make two points. The first is that we've talked a lot about uses that we might want to protect land for. I've heard things like thrift shops and their storage, or facilities for washing reusable containers. And I just want to make the point that all of these things are compatible with housing if you build up. I've been to thrift stores in cities, they exist in multi-story buildings. I don't know if I've ever been to a reusable container washing facility, but I think that is also compatible with housing. that is also compatible with housing. All of these things can happen and more, uh, so I won't keep harping on that point. The second point is, um, I am a homeowner in Ann Arbor and because of the way that our society works, it is the largest investment many of us who can make. So obviously we all care about our property values. I also am concerned about my high taxes, uh, but I also love the services that Ann Arbor provides. Ann Arbor is an incredible place to live and I don't want my taxes to go up, which means if I want the same services and lower taxes, I need more people to share that burden with. I need more density to have me pay lower taxes. I think I, I saw a couple of responses to tonight's agenda from a couple of homeowners who are concerned about density and maybe their property values. I just want to say as a homeowner, I would love more density. I think it helps us all out. We talked a little bit about transportation earlier. Density enables safe transportation networks, which enable, uh, lower carbon production transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello again. I appreciate the discussion tonight. I think I'm happy that you're taking another look at areas that would otherwise restrict housing, um, especially with higher heights contemplated for low-rise. I would challenge everyone to think about what the utility of a, the transition, mixed-use transition district is. If we are allowing higher heights and low-rise, I think some of those corridors, the R1 places like along Miller, some of the busier roads, that some of, some of which tend to be rental, would be the ones that organically redevelop anyway. I, I don't think we need to impose a higher height allowance there that might, what? Allow some podium buildings? Is that really what's going to evolve in those neighborhoods? Anyway, I would just, uh, like you to take a look at that. And like, and in my memo, I drew a diagram of how some of the R4C areas like south of, south U, um, south of William and near the old Fourth Ward, uh, if those are transition as, as currently contemplated, that would cap out at around 80 feet. If it were TC1 or something, a rebranded TC1, MU1, um, all those areas would be 120 feet. So I, you know, because it would allow a more sudden taper toward the more politically, you know, sensitive areas, obviously. So I just, I don't see the utility in spreading out, you know, a huge zone for a taper. I, I don't, I just, yeah, I question the utility of it. Lots of lovely pictures in my memo you can look at. Brixton Moore is not our friend. They wrote a complaint about TC1 because a lot of their tenants don't even allow them to be near multi-story buildings. They don't allow less than this, this Black Friday parking situation. So, um, there was the implication that, you know, by, by stopping them from expanding, we would be making these strip centers decrepit or something like that. Some of the most loved places in my neighborhood are in the Plymouth Road Mall, which, which is an aging structure, which are Packard and Platt. You know, the, these places as they age, they are natural retail incubators. I, I don't think it's bad to let places age and wait for them to redevelop in a, in a dense fashion. And, you know, every time we allow a strip center to renovate, like the Dollar Tree across from Arborland or add to it, it renews its lease on life. We would be locking our, we would basically be giving up many, many acres on the east and west sides of, of the city if we allowed those to incrementally redevelop. Thanks, thanks for the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Westfall. Do we have any remote callers? I think those are the only three folks remaining, so.
No hands raised yet.
Okay. Give it a few more moments. Okay. With that, we're going to close public comment. We're going to go on to commission proposed business. Are there any? All right. Not seeing any. We move on to the final item of our agenda, which is adjournment. Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Hammer Schmidt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.